Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular December meeting of the Concord zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. I will ask the appellant to come forward and be sworn in and be seated in the chairs to my right and offer any testimony that he or she would like us to hear. We do request that if at all possible, you can find your testimony to a 10-minute interval. We will then ask the appellant to step down and we will solicit testimony from anyone who is in favor of the appeal and also anyone in the audience who is in opposition to it. We ask that those people please do their best to confine their testimony to a five-minute interval. Following that, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there is anything from their office to add to the discussion, and then if anything has been raised that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next one. We have a very full inbox this evening, which is why we're starting at six instead of seven, so brevity will be very much appreciated. I can't promise you that you will prevail if you are brief, but I can promise you it will do your case no damage. The first case that we have before us this evening is 0003-2022, 5 Thomas Street. This is a recessed hearing. RH High Density Residential District, ZV Investments LLC. The owner wishes to redesign the property and expand from three dwelling units to 10 dwelling units on-site and requests variances to the front yard setback to be reduced to nine and a half feet to accommodate the structure replacing the existing garage, to the requirements for density of multifamily to allow 10 units rather than nine, to Article 2845D3 to allow separation of parking from primary structures to be seven feet as opposed to the required 15 feet, and Article 2845D5 perimeter buffer requirements will be reduced to accommodate existing and proposed reconstructed buildings. Article 2877G1, five parking spaces will need to be located in the front yard, and to Article 2878A to allow 12 of the required parking spaces to back into the dead-end street. Is there anyone here from 5 Thomas Street? Please come forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify? I think we need to take this off the, we need to reopen this case because it was recessed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please proceed.
Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering.
Dan Mark from ZV Investments.
What would you like us to know?
So, quick introduction of myself. I've been in the area all my life in this business for what seems like 100 years, but two companies, Shanner Luxury Homes, and we do new construction, high-end homes. We've had the pleasure of building some beautiful properties for our clients and have a reputation of doing some really nice product that always looks nice and benefits the neighborhoods. ZV Investments, we do, we look for older homes that are a little tired and in need of love, and we buy them, fix them up, and turn them into something special. And that's what brings us here tonight, 5 Thomas Street. We looked at that property three years ago, recognized it for what it is, which is underutilized property in a mixed-use zoning, which works perfect for what our, what I believe works perfectly for what we're trying to do with the property. It's unique in that it's, you can see it up there where it's certainly in the mixed-use zone, but it's unique because it's kind of tucked away in the corner. And it's really set up ideally for a nice little single-family and multifamily street. It's wooded on the west side, kind of protected from the street. The neighbors have done a beautiful job on the street fixing their properties up. And 5 Thomas Street, interestingly, has an enormous presence on the street. It's one of eight buildings, and yet it represents over 30% of the street frontage, has a large, large presence. We'd like to take advantage of that, turn it from what it is now, which I would call an eyesore, turn it into something beautiful, a landmark, and really enhance the neighborhood. Another piece of it was, we, when we were doing our due diligence, we understood that the city was working on their zoning regulations and looking to restructure them a bit, and we studied that and determined that it was, would likely work in our benefit when they got the zoning regs changed. We met with all the heads of the departments two years ago, two and a half years ago. Was pretty well received, very well received, and so we said, okay, great, we'll hang in there. We were, it was indicated that the zoning changes might take six to 12 months, I think. So here we are, two and a half years later, and I think they're getting close. But we kind of reached the limit. We figured, let's make a move and go see what we can do with this property. We met with the heads of the departments again a few months ago, had another great meeting with them, and I would call it very well received again, what we were trying to do and what our vision was. So that was encouraging, and that brings us here tonight. If we can go through a few slides, I'll just try to share our vision a little bit. So this one you can see, it's not outlined, but you can see the property there in Thomas Street, and you can see the amount of frontage that this property represents on the street. So it just, it does have an enormous presence, both on street frontage and the location of it, right on the corner of Loudon and Haven. So it's an important property, and if we can do, envision doing, it will be a benefit to all. Next slide, if you would. So you can't get onto Thomas from Loudon, you go around? Correct, yeah, yeah. So this is our vision of what we'd like to do, and it would certainly be a game changer for Thomas Street in terms of, you know, just the appeal and the beauty of it. Next slide, if you would. This is the existing garage structure that we need to do a lot of work with. We want to push this back, get it off the street further. It encroaches on the property line to the north. We want to move it over, lose one bay to accommodate that and make it conform. Next slide, if you would. And this is what we'd like it to look like. There'll be two units, two single-family units on the second floor of the structure. Next. This is the existing building, looking westward. That's what it looks like today. The next slide is what we want it to look like, like that. That's what we specialize in. Next slide, if you would. Another view of it from the, looking kind of northwest. And that's not a good angle of it, but that's what it would look like from that angle. I think there's one more, maybe? Yeah. And again, that's the overall look of it. That's our vision of what we're trying to do. I believe it'll benefit all. Nice thing, another nice thing about Thomas Road, it's unique. It's a dead-end street, very little traffic, only residential, the residents, only traffic generated by the residents of Thomas Street, and an occasional lost soul trying to figure out how to get back on Loudon Road. And that'll be the same when we're done. It'll be just, it'll be a lovely neighborhood that most of the neighborhood's in Concord with envy because it's a dead end. It's virtually a private road with city benefits. And the traffic flow will be no more than the traffic generated by the residents of Thomas Street. So that's, that's a very positive situation for us. That kind of sums up my introduction of what we're trying to do, I think. I don't know if I skipped anything, Jeff, but if I have, I'll let you pick up on it.
Sure, thanks. I'm just going to run through just kinds of things to add to that. Can you open up the second minor, Tracy? And just to, I guess, jump back a little bit, not to be too redundant because I don't want to save some time here, but Dan mentioned the neighborhood over there, and you asked about, about the streets. So Thomas Street is a short dead-end street. It's accessed off of Prospect Street, which is the street that's kind of parallel to Loudon Road right there. You have to go all the way out to the east to access Orbin Street over there. And this is the neighborhood that's right behind McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts, and these houses that are back that you probably drive by many times a week and wouldn't notice that there's a neighborhood back there. I know there's some folks in the neighborhood here today who will probably have some things to say. The one area you do notice if you drive by there is this very end of Thomas Street and this, this building and this house at 5 Thomas Street that Dan's done a good job describing. It is very much a mixed-use neighborhood right now. There are some existing multifamily buildings on Prescott Street, a 24-unit, I think an 18-unit, and maybe a six-unit. There's some duplex units out there, both on Thomas Street and on, and on Prospect, Pres, sorry, Prospect Street. There's also a handful of single-family homes, eight or 10 single-family homes. So it's very much mixed-use residential right there, as well as obviously being right adjacent to the, to the commercial area of Loudon Road. And as, as Dan mentioned, it's, it's right on the intersection. I mean, this property is the intersection of Loudon Road and Hayes &amp; Drive, which is one of the busiest intersections in the city of Concord. However, it has one of the lowest traffic volumes because it's at the end of a dead-end road, which is Thomas Street where the access is. Both Hayes &amp; Drive and Loudon Road are restricted right-of-way, so there is no opportunity to connect to those. If you want to go to the next one, it's again, just zooming into the next, and that just shows you again, we just talked about that, so maybe head to the next, the next slide. What I wanted to do is walk through the plan and why we're asking for this kind of slew of variances and how we, how we came to them. Yeah, you can go to the?
I'm trying. Not catching up with me.
One before that. And as Dan mentioned, he approached us almost three years ago with the, with the idea that he wanted to do kind of a phased project here. His, his thought at the time was he wanted to take that three-unit building and convert it into six units, possibly add on to it to have eight units, which he's allowed to do in the zoning right now. This is a high-density residential. He's allowed 12 units per acre. In the current zoning ordinance, he only has three units on there, and he's about three, three-quarters of an acre, so he's allowed to have up to nine units on the property. So that wasn't a problem. He also had the idea of adding those two units over the garage and kind of beautifying that garage, rebuilding it, pulling it back a little bit. As you can see, it's right on the front setback. It's actually across the property line to the north, so he wants to pull that back, make it a little bit more conforming, and add a couple units on top of that, which would then take it from eight units to 10 units. So it's, we go to that 10-unit, we're now over the allowed density, which is nine, and he kind of held off on this for a while because we're fully expecting that when the new zoning ordinance comes out, that this is the type of thing that's going to be promoted and that. So he's really kind of held off moving forward, being very anxious for that to come out, and we're still waiting for phase two of the order. This is in the phase two section of the, of the new ordinance, which has, there's been nothing released on in nearly three years. So, so we are moving forward right now, asking for these variances, one of them being the density. And I just wanted to point that out because he does have, you know, he is allowed to have nine units on the site right now. It's just trying to figure out how to do that, because there are these other zoning restrictions on the property. The first one is the buffer requirement. For a multifamily residential use, you're required to have perimeter buffers. This is a three-story building existing, so it's required to have a 75-foot perimeter buffer. The lot is 150 feet wide, so if you can just picture that, that's a 75-foot buffer around the perimeter of 150-foot lot leaves you with nothing. So there's no, there's no ability to put this three, this three-story structure on this lot today. So we need that variance, even just to convert and add a fourth unit to that existing building. He's going to need a variance because he doesn't have a buffer. So that's one thing we looked at early on was, well, what can we do here with a buffer? You know, we have Loudon Road and we have Hayes &amp; Drive. There really isn't a need for a buffer there. We have, you know, an existing single-family neighborhood across the street that he wants to be sensitive to. So what can we do? Can we enhance that buffer? What can we do? So we decided, let's not add on to this building in the direction of Thomas Street. If we're doing anything, let's just try to add on to the sides of the building. So we looked at a couple of those options. And also, can we pull that garage back a little bit so that, right now, those spaces kind of back out of that garage right onto Thomas Street with not a lot of, you know, site distance right there? If you're backing out of that garage onto the street, you've got to get well into the street before you can even, you know, see what's coming down the street. So we pulled that back another 10 feet or so. It gives us a nice long driveway apron there, and I think just provides a better, you know, visual from the, for the neighbors across the street. You can see on that plan, too, the rest of the parking is right in front of the building. They have that kind of looped driveway with, with outdoor parking in the front. And what we want to do is kind of remove that and put it more to the back of the site. So we're pulling back some of the existing impact along the frontage and putting it more to the back of the site, which just allows them this opportunity to kind of beautify the site, going along with obviously the renovations he wants to do to the building, trying to enhance the buffers that are there. So that's our first request for variances, really just to allow us to work with the confines of the site and expand the building. If you want to go to the second or the next one, Tracy, that shows you what we're, what we propose to do with the addition on the north end of this existing building, which we get him two additional units. So we'd be renovating the existing footprint to go from three units to six. The two units on the north end of the building would get us to eight, and then the two units above, two units above the garage would get us to 10. We'd have a driveway going to a parking lot in the back, and then some driveway. We're proposing to extend the, kind of the turnaround at Thomas Street to make use of that area. That would take some, some negotiation with the city, which we talked to them and approached them about, and they seem amenable to that, to kind of extending the dead-end T-turnaround there to allow us to back out onto the street there. That way, we wouldn't have to add any other parking in the front of the, front of the building. We could really keep it, keep it behind and to the side. So I think this is our attempt at, you know, dealing with, you know, the buffers and the setbacks that we have for the building and, and trying to justify the request for that, for that variance. Let's flip through my notes here. So the second variance, let's see, that was minimum yard requirements. The second variance is maximum density, which I already talked about. We're trying to go from nine to 10, which again is, it's, that is consistent with the multifamily. If you were to look at the existing multifamily units in that neighborhood, they're well in access of, of the density that we have, several of them. So what we're proposing is really just to be won over the, the current requirement of nine.
Is that based on the lot size?
That's based on the lot size, the buildable lot area, right. So it's 12 units per acre. We have three-quarters of an acre. So for example, one of the, just going through my notes, one of the multifamilies on Prescott Street is three-quarters of an acre, and it has 24 units. So that's more than 12 of what we're proposing. So that's just, it's, you know, twice as dense on that, on that small lot. So I don't think it's, you know, a whole lot of what we're asking for in terms of the density. The next one, Section 2845D3 is minimum building dimension separation. Again, this applies to multifamily units, and there's a, there's a requirement in that section that buildings be no closer than 40 feet to each other, and that all buildings be a minimum of 15 feet away from parking lots. So in this case, we, we identified this as a variance because where our driveway's coming through between the, the two buildings up there, we're within seven to eight feet of the driveway right there. Usually, we'd be trying to keep that 15-foot dimension. I mean, in this case, we're proposing curbed driveway. There's no other real way to get back and make use of that area other than being within, within the 15 feet of that building. So I think that, you know, normally when we look at that requirement, we're thinking that they want some land adjacent to the building for access and sidewalks and landscaping. And as you can see, we do have that everywhere else. We have 15 feet around most of the areas. Really what we're talking about is that, that one area right there, adjacent to the building addition, and then where we're pulling the garage back off the front property line, we're now getting a little closer than 15 feet to that parking in the back. We're closer to, to 10 or 12 feet in the back there. So this is really just kind of a variance for the, to fit it, to fit the stuff into that lot and still have a two-way driveway and not be asking. The other thing we could do is ask for a variance on, you know, parking spaces or size of spaces or something like that. We felt like this is an appropriate layout, and we didn't really need to have that 15-foot distance. Perimeter buffer, I talked about, oh, I got these out of order a little bit. Minimum yard requirement is one of the variances. That, that speaks specifically to that garage where the existing garage was across the property line to the north, and it's sitting right on the front property line. We do have a 15-foot front yard setback here, however, and we're only proposing that front building to be, that front garage should be nine and a half feet from the front property line. Yeah, we're trying to distance that so we have room for the parking space in the back. So we are going from a zero-foot setback right now. They're pulling it back to nine and a half feet, so we're, you know, we're decreasing the nonconformity that's there. We're pulling it 10 feet away from the side yard setback, so we are honoring that. And we're basically just rebuilding that garage, but we're obviously adding, want to add the two units on the top. So that's kind of the ask there, is allow us to, to pull that garage back, make it so it's better conforming, make it a better-looking structure. But we still, still do need to encroach into that, into that front setback a little bit. And the other two variances are related to parking, not, not the number of parking spaces, but there is a restriction, 2877G1, for multifamily use that says you can't have parking spaces within the front yard setback. Again, on this site, it's an existing multifamily use, and those garage spaces are parking spaces, and they are located in the front yard setback. We're proposing to pull those garage spaces back a little bit, but they'll still be within the front yard setback, even though less so. But it is a new building, so there will be those five garage spaces that are partially located within the front yard setback. So we identified that as needing a variance. Again, it's, it's, we're making that situation less nonconforming, so, and we think it's a reasonable use. And then the last variant, 2878A, is restrictions on backing into a street. Again, this is specific to multifamily uses. As I mentioned before, we're not allowed to back into a street. Here we have two instances where we're doing that. One is those garage spaces, which are already there. We're making them better by pulling them back, making them a little safer, but people will still need to back into the street to access those garage spaces. And then the new spaces we're putting down at the end of this dead end, those folks would also need to back out into the street. I think both of these are unique in that one of those is, is at the actual hammerhead of the, of the, of the dead end, so there's really going to be no traffic there. of the, of the, of the dead end, so there's really going to be no traffic there. So there really should be no safety issue about backing into the street. And obviously, the existing garage is very close to the end of the street. It's in existing condition that we're making safer. He could leave those five spaces there, leave that garage there, and, you know, not build the two units above it, and just keep the garage there and let five people park there. So this is certainly going to be a better situation. It's going to be a nicer building. It's going to be pulled further back from the road, so it will be safer, and it is just the same five parking spaces. I've probably taken much more time than the chair wanted me to, so that's, that's the summary right there. We do have the criteria. I think that, you know, our biggest thing here is, I think, that the dimensional requirements, we feel like this is really an attempt to, to make this a better, a better property, to a better functioning property. Certainly, it can support the density we're proposing. If the, if the ten units is a, is a tough ask, you know, if that, then his intent right now is to convert the, convert the existing buildings, so he goes from three units to six units. So we would need the rest of the variances in order to, really in order to do that, in order to add the parking spaces. He'd really like to rebuild that garage and add those two units there, and that would give him eight units that he's allowed to have. If we get the variance for the ten, for the ten units, then he would, as a third phase, kind of add on to the building. If he doesn't get the variance for the, for that third phase, then he may do that addition anyways and just have it a single-family unit, a one-story rather than two-story, because he's allowed to have nine units. He may wait to see how the zoning, the new zoning ordinance pans out. I expect that he's going to be allowed to have fourteen or sixteen units in here. So he may just wait until then. But he would like to get moving on the, the renovations of the building so that he can get the extra units in there and have some direction on the, the garage and, and that, that aspect of it. So I know that, you know, people are going to be concerned about density out here, so I just wanted to focus on that, that we are allowed to have nine units out there. And if, if that tenth unit is, is too much of an ask, you know, we understand that. But we just, he, we wanted to come and propose to you what his full vision is for the property, and so that everyone, everyone knows.
Yeah, and on that, on that tenth unit, you know, I'd be willing to make it contingent on the zoning change as well. And if it's approved, you know, and the zoning change does go in place and the densities increase, then, then, then I would implement that tenth unit. So, if that helps.
You wouldn't need us if the zoning.
That's right.
That's right.
What's that?
You wouldn't need us if the zoning changed and allowed it. You wouldn't, you wouldn't need to come to us for relief.
Right, right. No. But if it was approved, I would, I wouldn't mind it being contingent on that. And then, then I could just go, well, I guess, I guess, I understand what you're saying, yeah. Good point.
Questions from the board. Andrew?
I have a question. So you, on the main unit where you're going from three to six, so I saw part of that is you're going to finish the attic, but other than that, are you adding more space to the main building? Or are you just making smaller units?
Smaller units, correct.
So you're just changing the layout?
Yeah. Oh, no, there's one section where we're putting a second story on the south end.
Okay. And how many of these ten total units, what, how many bedrooms? I mean, I don't know if it said in there. I don't remember seeing. How many total bed, like, were, like, what's the, how many bedrooms are there, roughly?
Ten, I believe.
Ten units and ten bedrooms?
So each one's one bedroom?
No, no. In that unit, there'll be.
Oh, oh, in the main building?
Six units. Was, was that what you were asking? The main building? Yeah.
Well, just like, how many of them are three bedrooms? How many are two bedrooms?
There'd be four two-bedrooms and two single bedrooms.
In the main building, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Did, did I answer your question?
Yes. So I didn't phrase it very well, yes.
I'm glad you recognize that the density is a big ask. Can you give us anything to hang our hardship hat on in terms of the density variant?
Well, I can, I can say that, you know, I think when, the last thing I said is, is really the truth there. This is his vision for the property. He'd like to, he'd like to, to do that. So we, we didn't, we're trying to not come, I guess, twice, you know. But we recognize that that's, you know, maybe too much of an ask, and, and so we wanted to, to present the plan like this. I think, what I think of that density from is, is really just the, the, the neighborhood and what's out there right now, and that this is, you know, it does jive with what's out there. We have multifamily units on this street that are, that are much, many more units, you know. And I, there's concerns about, you know, traffic or anything like that. We're talking about one multifamily residential unit. I think it, the way that this lays out, you know, that, that tenth unit is, is what he's going for. And, I mean, I really do believe that, you know, he is going to be in a situation where he, he, he could get more if he wanted to, if he waits. And he's waited to the point where he just can't. So, no, I'm, you know, I think, I think, I think that's it. I think that's it.
Thank you. I appreciate your honesty.
Jim, did you have any questions?
Is the current three-unit, do you want to, is that occupied now?
It is, yes.
Okay. Any questions? No. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Just step down.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? It appears there are. Would, would you care to come forward, at least one of you?
One is mine from all of us.
Well, let's look at it this way. If you're going to repeat what other people have said, that's not particularly helpful. So if you've got something different to say from other people, then yes, come one at a time. If, if you're going to repeat what other people have said, just raise your hand and say, "I agree with him," and, and we'll, we'll, we'll do it at that.
You don't mind, do you?
No, I don't mind.
And thank you for coming back from last month.
Thank you.
It was a long meeting.
You get pride of place tonight.
It was unfortunate, but we're here.
You all swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
As you testify, would you please identify yourselves for the record?
My name is Mark Swineheart. I live at twelve Thomas Street. We've lived there for, my wife and I, for about thirty-seven years. It's a nice, quiet, little dead-end street, as I said.
You're on Thomas?
Yes, on Thomas. As a matter of fact, if I may, may I get up and approach the map?
Yep.
There are, Thomas Street comes up here, and we own about an acre and three-quarters up at the far end. Behind us is the state property. Yes, this is my property here. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood. There's seven single-family homes on the street. There are no, contrary to what you've just heard, there are no multifamily units on Thomas Street, except for this duplex and the property that's in question. On Prescott Street, up here are multi-units. There's nothing down here on our street, on Thomas Street. It's very, as they said in their application, very little traffic on the street. There's a, the most traffic that we get is walking, because people coming from the apartment houses or over Royal Gardens, Concord Gardens, walking down. Instead of walking down Loudoun, along the edge of Loudoun Road, they'll come down Ormond, Prescott, and Thomas. That's the most traffic we get, is people walking. And down at the end of Thomas Street, where the hammerhead, the two hammerheads are, there's a bus stop there. So a lot of people will wait right on Thomas Street there for the bus. We get a lot of state employees walking by, coming from transportation and Department of Safety, walking along there at lunchtime. And it's a nice, quiet little area. Exhibit A of the appeal implies that the applicant is resolving areas that are not currently in compliance and noncompliance. From me looking at the plans that we received from you folks, it looks like they're creating more areas of noncompliance. They're trying to go around in the buffer on all four sides, build in the buffer. And the plans I got, the garage that was in question, which they were talking about moving back ten feet, they're only moving it back less than two and a half feet. It's going from seven-point-four, seven feet, four inches from the property line right now, back to nine, nine feet, six inches. That's not moving it back ten feet. So they're not solving any problem there. One of the big concerns I have is, can you show the hammerhead down there?
Yep.
I don't mind getting up if that's allowed.
Oh, that's fine. I just didn't know if it would be easier for you.
As you can see, there's not much, Thomas Street's a relatively narrow street. During the wintertime, the city of Concord fills this whole hammerhead up here and here with snow. They put, they actually put it in three different places. Here, here, and on the front of my property. They come usually, well, depending on the winter, we usually count on them coming in with a bucket loader and Big Ten wheeler trucks three, four times a winter. And then they scoop it up and get ready for the next snowstorm. If they're going to park cars here, there's not going to be nearly the amount of room there. Generally, the only people that come, big trucks that come in once a week are on Friday after, Friday morning, when the city picks up the garbage. And I happened to notice last Friday, what they do is they come down the street, back in here, no, they pull in here, back up here, and then go back up. So you're going to, the applicant's asking to cut that off, pretty much, access to that, because their cars will be parking all the way out into, encroaching on the hammerhead. So that was, I just wondered if General Services had any, if they reviewed these plans? It's just a question of mine.
Engineering does.
Engineering does? Okay.
Yeah. That would be subsequent to any ruling that we made, but engineering would review them as part of the permitting process, as would the planning department.
Okay.
I don't think public works.
And it'll have to go to the planning board.
Yes. I don't think public works, per se, weighs in on it, but engineering, I think, usually defends their interests.
Okay. Thank you. The garages, I, I mentioned about moving them back. I don't see where it's moving them back ten feet. But I'll tell you something. When I first purchased my home in nineteen eighty-five, I looked at those garages, they were for rent. You could rent one, two, three, whatever. And I have too much junk, as my wife says. So I looked into renting garages. And at that time, I did not rent it. I don't know what the situation is now, but there were a lot of thirty-gallon and fifty-five-gallon drums stored in there. And it smelled like oil or waste of some kind in there. And I said, "No, I don't want to put anything in there." At the time, it was dirt. I believe it's been sealed over now with asphalt or concrete. What I would be concerned about is if they're going to dig that up and build another additional apartment house there, is that soil going to be remediated? Is they're going to follow city guidelines or state guidelines if they're going to be exposing that soil and digging it up? And again, I'm not sure if this is something that you folks consider, but I don't know where, if they have ten apartments on that site, it's going to up the residential on Thomas Street by almost sixty percent. It's like fifty-eight percent, the number of housing units that'll be on Thomas Street. So it's quite a big jump. Where are they going to put their dumpster? Or are they going to have twenty garbage cans sitting out there every week? I mean, I don't know if that's something that you consider. There is no.
Unless they're asking for a variance to place the dumpster somewhere, that wouldn't be part of our.
Okay. Well, I was.
It would be reviewed by the city.
Yeah, okay. I was concerned about, because they're asking to utilize every bit of the space and buffer zone on all four sides, as I said. There's no place for playground for kids. I mean, if they have two-bedroom apartments, there's probably going to be kids there. These are just, and again, I'm not sure if you folks take that into consideration or if it's your area. In paragraph four, the applicant says, "The value of the subject property parcel will significantly increase, which in turn will raise the value of adjacent property." I disagree with that strongly. This appeal of the variance seeks to put the maximum number of units on a very small, three-quarter acre lot. He's seeking six variances and is creating more areas of noncompliance than he's resolving. He said it's a game changer. Yes, the applicant said it was a game changer. It would be a game changer for Thomas, for Thomas Street. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope I got the five minutes in.
I think you got your five minutes worth. Who else would like to speak?
Who wants to go?
Well, mine was about traffic.
May I, may we have your name, please?
Oh, my name's Chilla. It's spelled C-S-I-L-L-A. Bowman, B-A-U-M-A-N.
What would you like us to know, Ms. Bowman?
Our address is eight Thomas Street. And we reside right on the corner of Prescott and Thomas Street. So, right now, there's potentially, well, there's not potentially, but everybody has two cars, because that's just the way it is. Married couples, there's, you have two cars. So, or more. So technically, you know, you have, we already have nine families there, so that's two times that. That's eighteen cars. That drive by my house, my corner, on a daily basis, one to three times a day or more. So now we're asking, this person's asking for a potential building that's going to house ten families. You know there's going to be two incomes, two cars per family, so that's twenty more cars. And he has, what is he asking for? Thir- thirty parking spots?
I counted thirty parking spaces on the property.
Yeah, thirty parking spots. I mean, thirty parking spots for, let's say, twenty people, for twenty cars. That's a lot of traffic there. I don't know if you've ever been on Thomas Street. It's not a very big road, and it's a dead-end street, exactly like he said. It's a very nice, quiet, dead-end street. And that's why we bought our home there, because it's a nice, dead-end street. There's no access to come from Loudoun or how, Hazen Drive to that property. Would Concord consider maybe opening that up so they can leave and come back through Hazen Drive and Loudoun Road? I mean, there was a reason why that got cut down, right? That got shut off for Loudoun Road from Thomas Street, right? I mean, obviously, because you can't get out there. So why are we building a big place for more families to reside on that street? It's a very small street. I don't see the better for it. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's, my property value won't go up. Who's going to want a cornered house that's constantly has a drive, cars driving by it? No one. I mean, I don't think so. But, go ahead, Jeff. You go say what you want to say.
Jeff Bowman. I'm Chilla's husband. We live at the corner house there. Ingress and egress is a big issue with a property like this. I understand that. We've already been here three times in the last fifteen years. For a property at ninety-five Loudoun Road, on the back of our property lines, right here, three different developers bought this property right here over the last fifteen years.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
We got a long night coming. Let's stick to this case, please.
Okay. Some of the points I've used for that property would apply to this property. That's why I brought it up. They cross over, okay? A lot of the problems that the board had with that property was ingress and egress, and that property is further out towards the exit onto Loudoun Road and out of our neighborhood. That would be the backside of our property. This property is all the way at the furthest point in, on the dead end of our street. The dead end starts out at Prescott and Ormond and comes all the way down and ends right there at Loudoun Road. This property is proposed to be at the very end of the dead end. Therefore, every piece of, every vehicle that comes in and out of that property is going to be, everybody's going to be affected that's outside of that property, that is on the outside. And that includes us, that includes Debbie, that includes the other two houses towards Loudoun Road, Mark. There's two other property owners that wanted to be here, but they could not be here. I'm not sure if they emailed the city and the zoning board about their grievances. And then all the people on Prescott Street are going to be affected by these, this extra traffic. Okay? That's one of my grievances with this. The ingress and the egress, the extra trash truck, heavy equipment, heavy truck, heavy equipment coming, that's another truck. That's not going to be a city truck. That's going to be a separate one if they have a dumpster. Extra, extra deliveries, snow removal, a very small piece of property to put ten units on. I know the neighborhood. I did a lot of research on it. It has a very, very nice history, dating back to the thirties, forties, when it was a Mercury dealership. The Novos owned it. It, for us, it just doesn't work. And I do believe. And I do believe it will lower our property values. I do believe when you, when you're looking for a single-family house, you don't wanna get a single-family house in the neighborhood that has a ten-unit tenant right across the street from your house. That's the way we look at it.
Anyone else like to speak?
I will. I'm Janelle Marquez.
Val Marquez.
Janelle.
Janelle.
Yeah. M.A.R.Q.U.E.Z. And I'm at two Thomas Street. So I'm the first little house across from where they're proposing. I agree with what my neighbors have all said. And I just wanna add, when they were doing their presentation, they mentioned for section twenty-eight dash seven dash eight A that there's no traffic, so there's no safety issue with going down and using that hammerhead. There's, like Mark said, so many people are walking, kids are out riding their scooters. I mean, it's, it's a safety hazard for all of us that use the street and are used to having a quiet, dead-end street. And that is why we bought our house, because of the quietness, the dead-end street, you know, having kids. So I just wanted to state that I disagree with them saying there was no traffic, there's no safety issue with using that section.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Yes, Debbie LaFave. F.A.V.E.
Thank you.
I agree also with everyone. I think that, I can't remember his name, mentioned that there was no addition to the house itself. But according to the blueprint, I do see an addition to that property also. I am directly across from those garages. So if they build up over that, I'm not gonna see much of anything other than these garages and apartments. Now I can see things above it. Otherwise, I won't when, if that gets built. Also, the road on Prescott Street is horrible. We've been trying to get the city to redo the road. Like I said, I've been there forty-two years. The road has never been done. Prescott Street is the one I'm talking about. That's full of holes and every spring and fall, they patch it and it comes out the next season and they patch it. And this means all these additional cars going back and forth is gonna make it even worse. We've asked to have it done and it has not been. I don't wanna look at that across from my house every day. And I do believe that it will devalue my property.
Very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comments from Congress?
This has been to the dev team, the development team, which is the department heads, as was mentioned. And so, General Services is at that meeting. So they, just to kinda let you know, the, the General Services and Engineering have both looked at this. And they will look at it again when it's in front of the planning board. So, you know, will, the dumpsters and some of those things will all be reviewed, just so that everybody's aware.
Were there any other communications connected with this case?
There was one letter that I believe was in your packet or your supplemental materials, maybe last meeting. And it's from Kelly Smith. And she did emphasize that with respect to the redesign and development, she takes no position. But she does have issues with the pavement on Prescott Street, as was mentioned, and the traffic concerns. If you would like to read it all into the record, you-
No, that's not necessary. It's, it's in the record and-
Yep.
She has very serious concerns about that street.
Yes.
That was most of what the letter was about.
Yep.
Does Kelly Smith have an address?
Yep.
It's for Thomas.
Thank you.
And she's not wildly impressed with how well this road's maintained.
Correct.
I think that sums it up. Thank you. Mr. Lewis, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
Yeah, just, I guess, a couple things here. And I may have, I may have misspoken on the garage. If you could go to the site plan, view of that. We're, we're pulling the site, we're pulling the garage back ten feet from the side property line to get it out of the side setback. I don't recall what I said on the front setback. But we are proposing right now, it's really, so the, the, the way that garage is designed right now is the, the unit on the second floor would overhang and have a, the, the footprint is larger than the garage footprint on the first floor. So we're asking for nine point six feet, which would be the dimension from the front property line to the front face of the second floor. So that's how far the, it's encroaching. The garage is the, is about three feet further, and so we have about thirteen feet to the face of the garage. So it's going right now from seven to thirteen. So we are pushing, pulling that garage back about six feet. If I said ten feet, I was mixing that up with the side setback. But we are pulling it back enough so that there would be distance there. Again, we're trying to find the sweet spot here. I think, what, what, what Dan's tried to do is a, you know, reasonable use on this property. I think if the, if the ten units isn't gonna fly, we're talking about nine units. So we're talking about proposing a nine-lot development here, which is the allowed density. And how do we get that to work, which is what he, what he wants to do? We could pull that front garage back further and, and comply with that front setback. But then we'd be close to the park and we'd have to do something else with the parking in the back. Move some spaces there. We don't have thirty parking spaces. We have, we do have twenty exterior parking spaces here, plus the five garage units, which were, which were counted. So those, that'd be, that'd be twenty-five. So I think that, like I said at the beginning, what he really wants to do right now is move forward with converting that three unit into six units. And we need the rest of these variances anyways. He'd like to fix the parking, he'd like-
I think we're covering a little ground here.
Fair enough. Prescott Street, I just wanted to say, and I did, I just wanna talk about this, 'cause I didn't talk about, too much about traffic, but, and, and, and if I, if I said there were multifamily units on Thomas Street, then I misspoke. There's, there's several multifamily buildings on Prescott Street. There's one duplex on Thomas Street. But there are a total of, on the, and I'm, and I'm talking about the, I know the folks here are from Thomas Street. But when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at, you know, we're at the end of a dead end, which just happens to be those two streets combined. So we're looking at the traffic on the street, we're looking at the traffic all the way out to, to Orman Street, basically. There are seventy-two total units on those streets combined right there. Fifty-one of those seventy-two are multifamily units, including the three on this property. So there is a multifamily on Thomas Street right now. Six are duplexes and fifteen are single-family units. If I was to do a quick, or tell you the quick, you know, IT, traffic volume, trip, trip generation of those seventy-two units, it'd be five hundred and twenty-eight trips a day. That's what's existing out there. So we're talking about going from three units, multifamily units, to nine multifamily units. So we're talking about going from seventy-two units to seventy-eight units on that street. So we're not talking about a significant increase-
It's units of traffic.
You, sorry, units of dwelling units. Seventy-two existing dwelling units, based on the tax records of the city.
Oh, I see.
On the Prescott, Thomas Street neighborhood, which I'm counting as one neighborhood, the seventy-two existing units. If we had six more, that'd be seventy-eight units, so-
You had, you wanted seven more.
Well, that's what we're saying, but I'm, I guess I'm acquiescing that, you know, we're allowed to have six units on there. So without withdrawing that variance request, I think that we acknowledge that maybe that is too much of an ask. But we wanna move forward with the rest of it. What is, what is the right amount there, you know? So we're allowed to do nine, so let's, you know, how do we fit that on there? And, and do something within the confines of the current, the current ordinance. And I did wanna talk a little bit at the end, can you just scroll down a little bit on that? So we did have discussions with development team a couple of times, once a couple of years ago and once this year. And we do have room, you know, what we didn't wanna do was propose a new driveway entrance off of Thomas Street for those part, that parking at the south, because there's this opportunity to make use of the existing turnaround. And we can grant an easement to the city on our property, so there's more room to, to have snow storage there. And this would all be done, this, this wouldn't happen unless we had approval from the city and from General Services. We think it's a better plan. It would technically require us to be backing out of those parking spaces under the street. The alternative would be to have another driveway that comes in and, and then you have another driveway on Thomas Street. We just think that's not as good of an idea. Make use of this, less pavement, everybody wins. So that's, that's the reason for that. If that variance was, you know, we were to sacrifice that, we'd just come up with some other way for the parking. But we feel like this is definitely a superior plan and we would be wanting to pursue that with the, with the city. I think that's basically all I wanted to add.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We've heard a request for nine, or is it eight? New apartment units to replace an existing, there are two there now?
Three.
Three. An existing three units. We've also heard testimony that the appellant would like to reconfigure the site to allow the units. Part of the reconfiguration would be to improve the relationship between the existing garage and the setback from what it was before. Let's start with Ted Evans. What do you think, Mr. Evans?
Well, I'm kinda mulling over the tenth unit and what the hardship argument would be there. And I, I understand the neighbor's sentiments, but he is allowed to have that number of units on the, on the property, not the tenth unit, the nine units, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, he's not necessarily allowed to do some of the other things.
I do have questions about the tenth unit and the hardship aspect of it. I don't think I have strong feelings about any of the other things, if they're somewhat typical to this kind of development.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused by what they're asking. So if we don't grant the, the tenth unit, does he still need a lot of parking variances?
Yes, because of their location.
He might-
I don't know. I couldn't, I didn't glean enough from them.
Do we have eighteen parking spaces here?
Right now.
Is that what he's asking for, eighteen?
He said there were twenty-five and including the five in the garage.
Twenty-five and include the five in the garage.
Oh, include the five in the garage.
Yeah, I don't think he needs a vari, he, he's not asking for fewer than the required. It's not the number of parking spaces that-
No, that's not where my thinking was running at the time. But we'll come back to that when it's my turn to chat. Any other comments?
Uh, we serve the right to come back after I listen to-
And you have that right.
Thank you.
Laura?
I hear and appreciate the concerns of the abutters. But as Ted pointed out, nine units are permitted on this property. So I, I can't grant the variance for the tenth unit if for no other reason than because you admitted there's no hardship. So as far as I'm concerned, that one's off the table. But nine units is permitted. And given the dimensions of the lot, variances have to be granted from the buffer, because otherwise, nothing can be built on the property. There are already parking spaces in the garage in the front setback. They already back into the road. The separation between the structures and the parking doesn't bother me, particularly given the size of the lot. You know, we're not looking at whether nine units would change the neighborhood. We have to look at the variance that are requested and their impact. And I don't think those would alter the essential character of the neighborhood because of what they are. They are, you know, for the location of the parking, for backing into the road and for smaller areas on the site. I don't think that is going to decrease surrounding property values. And I think substantial justice would be done. Again, given the size and the configuration of the lot, there's really no benefit to the city from enforcing the various zoning provisions that they're asking for relief from. So I would be inclined to grant all but the density variance. And then the parking issues, the dumpster issues, all of that is gonna get flushed out at the planning board. And they will address those issues. That's my take.
Thank you.
Was that slow enough?
Andrew?
I, I tend to agree, I think, with the others have said. It's, it's, I, I certainly understand the neighbor's concern. I mean, I, I would likely feel the same way if I was the neighbor. But it's a, it's a high-density zone. And so anyone, anyone in that, I mean, it, it so happens, this is a tucked-back neighborhood that has a somewhat single-family feel in proximity to a lot of commercial and multi-unit buildings. But it's, anyone, anyone looking at purchasing there is on notice that this is a, you know, this is allowed there. As, as far as the variance is, the one I'm, if they didn't add that, that addition on the side, I don't know if they would need the buffer to the, the seven feet to the fifteen.
I don't know.
But none, none of the neighbor's concerns really go to, to any of the variances, except for the dead-end hammerhead, which, you know, I, I am convinced, because it's on the, it's on the dead end there, it doesn't make a ton of sense for them to build a whole new driveway. So I, I tend to agree.
Okay. The, I agree with everything that my colleagues have said about this. Certainly, the nine units can't happen unless some forgiveness is granted here. And that's why there are variances. And the configuration of the lot creates that. One question that does come up in my mind, however, is if we go to nine units and we go to the amount of parking required by the ordinance, the parking lot could be smaller to the tune of, they've got twenty-five parking spaces, they'd need eighteen under the ordinance. My arithmetic says they've got seven extra spaces. If they were to eliminate even one, two, three, four, five of those spaces, they could probably, or six, they could probably reconfigure the parking lot so that it's not in the setbacks anymore. Let's see. Are we five feet everywhere? I guess we're five feet anyway. So that really doesn't matter, does it?
No, the issue is the garage spaces in the front setback.
Yeah.
And the driveway itself, the separation between the driveway and the buildings.
Yeah. Okay, so eliminating parking spaces doesn't actually improve things any, considering that five of them are in that other building?
I mean, it does strike me as that it, if they eliminated those parking spots, they could have a greater separation between the structure and the parking lot. But I'm not, that variance is probably the most minimal of their requests.
It's also not up to us to redesign the parking lot. We either say yes or no. I couldn't resist. But I'm going to resist. I, I agree with my colleagues. I think that I would support a motion to grant all the variances except for the additional unit. We haven't heard any testimony that suggests that there's hardship that requires the tenth unit. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will make a motion. Let's start with the denial. I move that we deny the request to allow ten units rather than nine because there has been no evidence of unnecessary hardship that would justify that variance request.
That was item two.
That was item two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, I believe, that that variance is denied. Would anyone care to make a motion with respect to the remaining variances?
I will. I move that we approve variances one, three, four, five, and six to allow a reduced front, front yard, to allow reduced separation between parking and primary structures, to allow a reduced perimeter buffer, to allow far, five parking spaces in the garage to be located in the front setback, and to allow twelve of the required spaces to back out onto the dead-end street. Based on the facts I articulated earlier, I believe that all five of the variance criteria are met.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variances are granted. That brings us to the next case on our agenda this evening, which is case fifty-seven twenty-two, one thirty-eight Hall Street. I.N. and R.O. Industrial and Open Space Residential Districts, Amiskeg Realty LLC and Amiskeg Beverages LLC are the owners. They wish to expand an existing industrial use in the R.O. district and cover forty-five point seven percent of the lot area, where the R.O. district and with, with the R.O. district, I mean, within the R.O. district. Is that, is that a typo?
Sorry, I was looking at the plans. Let me look at the agenda.
Or am I just misreading this? Says, "Cover forty-five point seven percent of the lot with the R.O. district."
Within, yep.
Within, okay. The R.O. district. And request variances two, table of principal uses to allow use L1- manufacturing in the R O district," and maximum lot coverage to allow 45.7% lot coverage in the R O district where 10% is permitted. Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth? I do. Please have a seat and identify yourselves for the record as you testify.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Eli Leino, L-E-I-N-O. I'm an attorney with Bernstein Schur in Manchester. I'm joined tonight by Jeffrey Merritt, the project engineer from Granite Engineering, as well as Zach Dano, who is the operations manager at Amiskeg Beverages. We are, as Mr. Chairman noted, asking for a variance for use and lot coverage in a portion of our lot that is in the R O zone, but first, I think it's beneficial for the board if Jeff describes the proposed reconfiguration of the lot and just generally the area before I get into the five criteria.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Just for the record, Jeff Merritt, I'm an engineer with Granite Engineering, where the civil site engineers for the project. Try to be brief here. We have two variances. These are both associated with Amiskeg Beverages. It's a beverage distribution facility that's located actually in Bow at 510 Hall Street. We have a pretty unique property. The municipal boundary line actually splits this facility. So on the Bow side is the building, and then on the Concord side is really the distribution side of the business. So the truck circulation, the fleet storage, some employee parking. So the distribution side comes off of Concord, and then on the Bow side is the existing warehouse building. So on the Bow side, we get a 218,000-square-foot building there. Concord side is predominantly truck parking, tractor-trailer parking, employee parking. There's a handful of small outbuildings there as well. The other lot in Concord, which is the northern lot, is an undeveloped lot. If you've been out there and driven down Hall Street, it looks like a big lawn or a field. There were some soccer goals on it in the past, so it's been used for soccer historically. On the Bow side, all the properties are located within the industrial district. On the Concord side, the two properties that we have are primarily located within the industrial district. However, there's a band of the property which is actually located within the R O district, and that's why we're here tonight. If you look on the map that's up there, Eli can point it out, there's a swath of green land.
This isn't the site industrial here, and this is the continuation of the R O zone, which is open space residential, which includes 93 and the railroad tracks and then a portion of these industrial uses.
So it's pretty unique. You know, we have a split property in terms of municipal boundary, and then we've got a split property the other way in terms of district boundary. So the project that we're working on involves both Concord and Bow. We have to go through Bow for site plan approval as well as the city of Concord. It's a project which is less about an expansion of Amiskeg Beverages and more about reworking the site and the building for efficiency reasons. Right now, what's going on, and what has been going on for a long period of time, is all of the inbound shipments, so all the millions of cases that they receive a year and then distribute throughout the state comes through one single overhead door. Typically, at a shipping and receiving facility like this, you would have a series of inbound doors so that you don't have a lineup of trucks waiting to offload. It's not a very efficient way to operate. It's been running like that for a long time, and we've been working on a plan with Amiskeg to fix that, and that's what this does. So on the Bow side, to rectify that, since the building is in Bow, there's going to be a building addition there, and we're cutting in a series of new overhead doors there to get rid of that single overhead door for the inbound receiving. So we'll have a dozen or so doors on the new addition, which will fix that. On the Concord side, we're proposing to rework that entire distribution side of the business and the fleet storage, the tractor-trailer storage, the tractor-trailer circulation, and the employee parking that's out there today. So all those uses exist out there today in some shape or form, but our project proposes to reconfigure them in a more efficient and better manner.
You'd be building new building and paving?
New paving, exactly. In the R O district, what's going to happen is those uses that are already there today, the truck circulation, parking, et cetera, those accessory industrial uses, get further extended north into the R O district, and that's why we're here tonight. In the industrial district, so those portions of the project that are going to be located in the Concord's industrial district, those are allowed by right. It's just the band of the R O district that kind of frustrates the project. And so the two variances we're seeking is first, one for the use, to allow these accessory industrial uses that, again, are already there today, but to be reconfigured and further expanded, to allow that to happen in the R O district. And then secondly, is for lot coverage. So in the R O district, since that's a residential district, the lot coverage, which would typically be necessary or practical for development in that district, is only 10%. And that lines up with a house and a driveway and, you know, a shed, that kind of thing. On the flip side, the industrial district, the lot coverage is 80%. So as we expand our industrial development into the R O district, our lot coverage is at about 45.7%. So we're seeking our second variance involves a lot coverage variance to go from 10% to 45%. But again, we're rate-adjacent to the industrial district, which has the 80% coverage requirement.
Could you point out on the map, I may not... It may be right here, but I'm not seeing it. What is the part that you're building in the R O district that's not there now?
So I'm going to point on this, and then we'll look at the site plan.
And what is the red area? Is that not your property at all?
That's just a zoning overlay.
That's a different zoning district. So follow me here. This gray area, that's the existing building.
Yeah.
This line right here, see that?
That's the town line?
That's the town line. This wedge-shaped lot is Lot 3. That's where the distribution is. See the road coming in, fleet storage, truck circulation?
And that's all there now.
That's all there today, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
This is the soccer field or lawn, whatever you want to call it here. So what we're proposing to do in this green band is this line of edge of pavement here gets shifted north. So we further move this direction. So in this green area right here, we're doing the same shift north, if you will, with the site in this area over here, but that's all permitted by right. It's just this fringe area right here that frustrates it. And again, like I said before, this type of use exists there today. This isn't a use which is new or foreign to the area. This exists there today, similar over here, you know, industrial district here, you even got some industrial use here. So it's very, it's quite trivial in some respects.
There's no... Even though it's residential open, there's no residential anywhere near there, right?
No, I don't know why it's residential. When you look at it on the map, you know, this is what, Griponi? I think this is... Yeah, so this is Griponi down...
Yeah.
Let me get my bearings there. No, this is the gas station. So these are gas stations here, right? This is Griponi. This is part of the gas station as well with the truck storage out back there. This is all commercial here, and then there's the interchange, the highway. That is in the R O district. And then this is the industrial, so industrial residential commercial is this. I don't know.
I think we talked about the zoning change for the other application. It seems like this would be a spot where if any of you were in between Hall Street and the railroad tracks, you would think you were in the industrial zone. The railroad tracks would certainly have been a reasonable spot to separate those zones, not to mention that obviously the car dealership, et cetera, and the highway, I guess, need to be zoned something, but I don't think it's a residential open space.
Yeah. It's just kind of illogical, at least the residential district on our property, to ever put residential there. You'd have to cross through the industrial zone to get there, so it didn't make sense. So anyways, that's the project. Eli, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Again, I realize that the board has a full agenda. I did want to go briefly through the five criteria here. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest, a standard which it would need to change, the essential character of the locality, threaten the public health, safety, or welfare, or unduly conflict with the ordinance. Again, this is a zone that clearly should be fully industrial. It's all industrial uses between the railroad and Hall Street, and we just want to continue the use that is already there, not frustrating the purposes of this ordinance or changing anything to the detriment of the neighbors. Again, observing the spirit of the ordinance, as noted, we've asked for variance from this R O 10% piece, but we are well on the entire lot in conformance with the industrial lot coverage of 85%, I believe. Again, throughout the whole property, our lot coverage is plus or minus 50% in Bow and in the Concord pieces of this. So again, well within the spirit of the ordinance. The substantial justice balancing test here, the proposal's consistent with the property's current use, and if we're not granted these variants, it frustrates the expansion of this, which again, is not on the side closer to any of the few residential homes in the area along the bank of the river. This is really as remote on the property as it can be from any abutter, especially any non-industrial abutter to the north. So the balancing test certainly indicates that the private rights here of the applicant, I think, can be... The relief can be granted without negatively harming anyone. Property values, again, the railroad right-of-way, the industrial uses to the north and the south, and then this being as far removed from any of the residential lots closer to the river. I think that this is as minimal as one could expect while improving the value of this property and the use of this industrial zone. And the literal enforcement would result in the unnecessary hardship. One of the criteria to consider is the uniqueness of this lot with respect to the substantial relationship with the public purpose of the ordinance. This law, as Jeff has said, bisected twice, both by the town line and this illogical zoning line is certainly a one-of-one in this area of town. No one else is fronted with those two issues, and proposed use being reasonable is its existing, it's upright in the industrial zone, and interestingly, if this whole area were zoned industrial, we'd only need one variance because the accessory parking use would be allowed if the underlying use were allowed, but because it's in that residential zone for reasons, it requires this variance here. So there's a substantial hardship if that's not granted without a benefit to the public purpose. So that's for the use variance. I think the criteria, the similar factors, of course, for the lot remains unique, the public purpose remains the same, but of course, it's asking for the area asking to be 45% coverage in that R O zone. As Jeff said, a house with a garage and maybe a shed comes in around 10% of lot coverage, so that's understandable in a zone that requires two-acre lots, not for industrial uses. That wasn't what was considered in this parcel. So it's... The zoning line there is basically inconsistent with the ordinance, whereas what we've proposed would be consistent with the use as an industrial lot that's been successful over the years, provides an opportunity for Amiskeg to improve the efficiency of their building without being forced to look for a new, bigger location somewhere else, really has the efficiency of allowing them to continue here and put the new engineering plan into play. Again, substantial justice and detriment to the neighbors, et cetera. I do not see one at this remote piece of the lot. Of course, the whole area is industrial, and I don't know how harmonious that is with the riverfront houses, but this is as far removed on this law as it can be from any of the other uses that wouldn't really comport with it. And again, the law is unique, and the use, I think we've shown over the years, is reasonable and works well in this industrial zone. So I don't think I need to belabor the point, but we'd all be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions from the board? Andrew, any questions?
No.
Jim? Ted? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Code enforcement, any comments?
No.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is a beer distributorship or beverage of some sort distributorship industrial, not warehouse?
It's actually... It's a separate use on the table of uses, and it's allowed in the industrial district.
I see. So it is a specific use, a distribution facility?
It is. It's a beverage use, literally.
My, aren't we precise?
Sometimes.
Good.
Do you have any idea why the zoning ordinance drawn that way?
I'm too new to know all of the...
Okay.
I'm not new, and I don't know. Very good. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I'll invite discussion. Let's start down at Andrew's end of the table. How do you see this, Mr. Winters?
Well, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer to me. I mean, it's obviously kind of surprising. I never thought about what a highway is zoned at because it never comes up, but I guess there's no highway zone, so.
So I... You know, there's obviously no other... No residential use or possible use anywhere near there, so it, you know, would defeat the purpose to, you know, enforce this strictly.
I agree. Neither variance is going to alter the essential character of that industrial neighborhood. Neither variance is going to diminish surrounding property values. Enforcing the zoning ordinance strictly is not going to result in substantial justice, and there's ever been a unique lot. This is one of them.
Very good. Jim?
Yeah, I have nothing to add to.
I agree.
I do, too. I think you could have argued this as the Governor's Island situation, where you can't use it for what it's allowed.
You could have, yeah.
I mean, they don't call it that anymore, but that's... Boy, am I dating myself. Okay.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. We'll leave that right there. Very good. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve both of the requested variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variances, and there were two, I believe, are granted.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You're welcome. That brings us to case 0003, 2022, 0 Elm Street, Pennacook, RN Neighborhood Residential District, Kathleen A. and Scott W. Preve, trustees. The owner wishes to reverse the zoning administrator's decision and that the city recognize the grandfathered status of Lot 8 as a separate lot of record.
We better turn the lights on for you. You're going to be old-school in the dark over there. Can we turn those lights on? How do we do that?
I'm sure I can.
I think that slide dimmer back there does it.
Nope, that's the... Now you done it.
Uh-oh.
Kim, you talk.
That wasn't it.
Don't do that.
We got to do better than that. What's this? Did we try this one?
It's got to be more patient.
It takes an architect to figure that out.
I was going to say a room full of engineers.
I had to mention that English major. All right. Mr. Bernier, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
I do.
And you as well, ma'am?
I do.
Would you please identify yourselves for the record as you testify?
Good evening. Here tonight, something that I've been dealing with for 27 years and I thought was over, but came soaring back a couple of months ago. Kathleen Preve owns a piece of property on Elm Street in Pennacook, and the family's owned the property since 1946. They bought the second lot in 1946, the first lot in 1943. They bought the second lot to operate a business and did so until the mid-1990s. They've owned the property, two separate lots, always paid taxes on it. It's always been taxed as a separate building lot. They've paid full taxes on it. The current assessment is $119,900. They've been paying taxes on the property as an existing lot for decades as a building lot, clearly. $119,900 is a building lot. Kathleen decided that it was time to move on and sell the properties. This piece she hung on to after her husband passed his investment property in hopes that it would return some money for retirement. The perspective... The prospective buyer went to seek a building permit and was told that the lot had been stripped of its grandfathered status and wasn't eligible for a building permit. The statute currently defines this as an involuntary merger. It's not really a great description of what took place, but the statute has a definition. I'll, I'll read it. It says, "An involuntary merger and involuntary merged means lots merged by municipal action for zoning, comma, assessing or taxation purposes without the consent of the owner." That's the statutory definition of, of involuntary merger. The statute six seventy-four thirty-nine goes on to say that no city, town, county, or village district may merge pre-existing subdivided lots or parcels except upon the consent of the owner. There are many different avenues or mechanisms for merger. One of them is, is what has been occurring since probably nineteen ninety-five is when I first started to get phone calls in my office. I'm a land use consultant, work with zoning and subdivision regulations extensively. Former planning board member, planning board chairman. I worked on the two thousand and four zoning ordinance with the chair back in the day. And very familiar with, with it. And in my office, we would get calls prior, prior to two thousand and four, we'd get calls, I think, you know, five or six times. I got calls from people who went to get a building permit on a lot that they had owned for years and were told that, oh, because you own the lot next door, it's no longer grandfathered and you can't build on it. This was, this was very difficult for a lot of people because they were paying full taxes on it. So it was only merged for zoning purposes. That's, that's important because some municipalities would, would merge lots by erasing lines on tax maps. So one day you have two lots on the tax map and the next day the line's gone and now there's just one there. That was, that was a form of merger that some municipalities were doing part in nineteen ninety-five. But this, this one is specific to zoning. This was kind of unique. And it was very difficult for a lot of people to deal with. It didn't merge the lots. The biggest problem with it is, is the municipalities never had the authority to actually merge the lots. You have a, a piece of land has a title at the Registry of Deeds in the county government and, and that title is there. And municipalities never had the authority to reach into the county government's registry of deeds and alter the title of the property. What they could do is they could erase it off the tax map and, and, and remove any grandfathered status that it had by zoning. So they're essentially merging it by, by zoning. The problem with that is that they would continue to get taxed as, there's two major problems with that. First, they'd get, continue to get taxed as a building lot even though it could not be built on, which could be quite painful if that went on for decades, which it did in this case. The other problem with it is that the owners were never notified. There was absolutely no notice when zoning eliminated the property. So they would continue to pay taxes thinking it was a building lot, thinking it was part of their retirement investment portfolio and that everything was good. And then when they went to sell it, they would get denied, the prospective buyers would get denied a building permit and then would tell the landowners that the property is essentially worthless. In, in two thousand and four, the city of Concord adopted a, a new zoning ordinance. And within that ordinance, the codified this act. Twenty-eight eight-three essentially says that if you own two contiguous parcels and one of them is non-conforming to the current zoning statute and it can be made conforming somehow, doesn't really clarify, the lots are not, the lot is no longer considered non-conforming. So it loses its grandfathered status as a separate lot, essentially. So twenty-eight eight-three effectively consolidates non-conforming lots of record even when they are separate tracts of land in the, in the county registry of deeds. And even when they're being taxed as separate lots of land, which is very, very difficult. After two thousand and four, this became the process that the city of Concord and the code office worked under. And during those years, I got about two calls a year from people who had their property merged in this manner. Some of them did come and try to get variances. Some of those variances were granted, some of them were denied. And some of them just couldn't afford to go through that process. So they had their properties merged and even though they'd been paying taxes on the separate lots for years. The wheels of justice move slow, but they do move. And in two thousand and ten, the legislature passed a law that said, as I read, that no city, town, county, or village district may merge pre-existing subdivided lots or parcels except upon the consent of the owner. And they passed it, they made that the law. That went into effect in two thousand and ten. From two thousand and ten till two thousand and twenty-two, I received no phone calls in my office from people who had their property merged. So I had assumed that this was a done issue. However, the twenty-eight eight-three is still in your zoning ordinance. It's still there and it still says the same thing. It still says that two lots that are owned by the same person that are, that have any non-conformity will be merged if conformity goes away, if they're merged. So that lot, that ordinance is still in the books, but the code department was not enforcing it for ten years. And, and then in August this year, I got a phone call from a builder who said, gee, I went to get a building permit on this lot and they're saying it's not a lot of record even though it's shown on the tax map, we have a survey of it. And, and so I, I looked at it, I did some research. It's clearly a separate lot of record. There is some caveats in case law about voluntary merger where a landowner does something that merges the two lots, like if you were to build a house across the lot line. And there's really good case law since two thousand and ten that really helps people like me, when people come into my office, to understand when a lot is merged and when it's not. There was nothing in the history of this lot that would suggest that the lot was, was merged by a physical act of merging the lot. They, the, the second lot was a business, like I said, so there was a residence on one lot. They operated a business on the other lot from the late nineteen forties till mid nineteen nineties. The only structure currently on the lot, there was a, there was a Quonset hut garage for a while, which is now gone. But the, the, the only garage that's on the lot was the business and housed the business.
What type of business was that?
They recycled cardboard. They had a baler inside a building in there. And so the lot was, was separate. Never, there was no physical merger of the two lots at any time. The, so I was like, oh, the code's just confused. And I says, let me just, you know, I'll just go down and talk to code and we'll get this straightened out. And, and I did and I met with, with code. And, and the meeting went, went sort of well, but I didn't really get the sense that they understood the issue in the history of, of this involuntary merger statute and, and the history of it. So shortly thereafter, on September twenty-seventh, we got a decision. So, so code said, we'll, we'll make a decision and we'll, we'll let you know. So on the twenty-seventh, we received a decision. And that, that decision, that decision was stated that twenty-eight eight-three eight-three, which is the twenty-eight, twenty-eight eight-three statute of the city of Concord zoning ordinance excludes land from non-conforming lot status. So that doesn't have its grandfathered status if they do not conform with current dimensional requirements and adjoining another lot with the same owner, contiguous ownership issue, that could make the lots conforming. Code went on to defend twenty-eight eight-three by stating that they were unaware of any case law or statute that would prohibit application of this ordinance. So I went back to code and, and provided some documentation on the new statute. So in two thousand and four, we had a code that was written that said that lots in common ownership could get merged by the, by the code office. In two thousand and ten, the state legislature said, no, you can't do that. And, and some municipalities tried to keep doing it and they actually amended it a couple of times to make it even clearer that, no, you really can't do that. The Admissible Association, which is an association for municipalities and they have attorneys there. And in two thousand, I think it was two thousand and thirteen, they put this question and answer format together. An attorney for, for the municipal association did that. And the question was, what is the law now? And the answer from the admissions attorney was, in short, involuntary mergers are no longer legally enforceable and the, and owners whose lots have been involuntarily merged have an opportunity to restore the former lot lines. She goes on to say, "This change occurred in two thousand and ten when RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine A was amended to add the following sentence, which is the one I read, 'No city, town, county, or village district may merge pre-existing subdivided lots or parcels except upon the consent of the owner,' was added to the statute. It became in effect on September eighteenth, two thousand and ten. In other words, no involuntary merger provision may be legally added to a zoning ordinance now and those in existence were no longer, are, were no longer enforceable after the effective date of the law." So essentially, what the municipal association is saying is that you can't do what, what twenty-eight eight-three says you can do anymore. So in two thousand and four, you could, in two thousand and ten, you couldn't. So, and I think that's why I stopped getting phone calls because it stopped happening. So we fast forward, I provided this information. I kept going back and forth. I begged code not to do this because it's, it's really cruel to somebody. If you could imagine you have this investment, you know, some people do invest in real estate as, as an investment for their retirement and other things. You, it's assessed at a hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. You're planning on that and then all of a sudden, totally unknown to you, it's now worth nothing. You've been paying taxes on it all along and all of the value of that property is just gone. And you're, so it, it's very, very hard. And I, and it's been very hard to deal with for us in the office when people come in and we have to deal with it. So I, I really tried to do the best I could, but I never, I never could, could get a sense from code that they really understood the issue. And, and code looked to, to other people and I encourage that to the city's attorney and others, but I, I don't think that they ever, when I got the response back from, from the people that they interacted with in the city, the answers seemed to me as though the right question didn't get asked, you know? So it, and, and I really, the last thing I want to do is be here tonight because it costs money to have me here and, and just continually to, to wind this down. But unfortunately, the thirty-day clock, we have to file an appeal within thirty days or we lose the ability to do that. So we had to file an administrative decision and that's, that's why we're here tonight. I continued to work with, with code and hoped that, that they would come to a resolution. And I, I really, I, I kind of get their perspective. I mean, you know, the, the brand new, both Dave and Tracy are brand new to the city. I get that they wrote a decision and now we're, we were asking them to say, oh, yeah, we got it wrong. And, and they just were, you know, being brand new, I wouldn't want to do it either. I wouldn't want to say I got it wrong after I wrote it down. So it, you know, it, it got, we're here because of that. And it's tough, I get it, but you know, this, Kathleen's been a resident her whole life at the city of Concord. Raised kids here, paid an enormous amount in taxes on this property that's now worthless. And, and we really would appreciate the board if they would reinstate it as a lot of record. Code had put together a memorandum of, of, for tonight's meeting for you guys to review. It starts out with facts. The first bullet point is that the city has not involuntarily merged the two lots. The city has always treated the parcels as two separate lots for the purposes of the zoning map and tax collection, which are absolutely true. Tax the Jesus out of it. The, the two lots have separate tax identification numbers and it's shown on the tax maps as separate lots and receive separate tax bills. That is also true. The first statement is not true. The statute is very clear about the definition of an involuntary merger. You don't have to merge, you don't have to erase the tax map line. It's not an inclusive requirement. It lists each one of the items separately in the statute. You can merge the lots by zoning, which is what they, what code did. They said, okay, we didn't, we didn't merge the lots by tax reasons, but we merged them for zoning purposes. So the first statement is incorrect, that they, that they were not involuntarily merged. They most, by the statutory definition, they most definitely were involuntarily merged for zoning purposes. Several other bullet points about the history of the lot. There's some inconsistencies in, in what took place, but none of these are really relevant to the, to our case. So that she owns, Kathleen owned two lots. She has sold one of them. The lot that lost its grandfathered status, she couldn't sell because it's not worth anything. But she couldn't sell it for nothing either. She couldn't give it away. She can't do anything with it right now. But she no longer lived in the house and needed to sell it because she couldn't support it over the winter. So her residence was sold, so now she just owns Lot Eight. And this is the lot that we're, we're here tonight about. That really is irrelevant to the case. I mean, this lot is either a lot of record or it's not. So, you know, what's taken place in the last three weeks or month and a half or two months is kind of relative to the bigger picture of, you know, is this a lot of record or not? This is a copy of the subdivision plan that created this lots. This, this was redrafted because the original's not in the best of condition. The lots were created in nineteen oh-six. They were sold off. Lot Eight is shown as Lot Six on this map. The Preve's residence was on Lot Seven, that's shown on this map. The, all the lots have seventy-five feet of frontage. These lots were all sold to different owners. So from nineteen oh-six, Lots Six and Seven were, were sold to different owners. The Preve, Kathleen's in-laws purchased lot, the first lot in nineteen forty-three and the second lot in nineteen forty-six from different owners. Operated a business on one, lived on the other, never merged the lots as a single lot of record other than they owned them in the same name, which is really, it's a really minor thing. If, if, if Kathleen and her husband owned one of the lots and Kathleen owned the other, it wouldn't be common ownership. The fact that they put it in the same name, which is so arbitrary, it's, that's what makes this, this application law so cruel. Is it's so arbitrary. If you just do one little thing, you're, you're safe, this lot. If, if this lot had never been brought into common ownership with the exact same name, it would be a lot of record and it would have its grandfathered status. So it's just a really subtle, subtle thing. So it goes on, some, some other bullet points under the appeal. I guess these are arguments to, to, for the board to agree with code. The first bullet point is that because the lots were never involuntary or administratively merged, which again is incorrect, clearly by the statutory definition of voluntary merger, they've been merged for zoning purposes.
But you're not here under the statute. If you were here under the statute, you'd be in front of the city council.
No, no, this is where we appeal a code administrative decision.
Under the statute, if you want to have involuntarily merged lots unmerged, you go to the city council.
We're not. This law was never merged.
Exactly.
It was merged, we're asking you to, it was merged on September twenty-seventh by code and we're asking you to reverse that decision. That's an appeal of an administrative decision.
But she's not saying it was merged. She's saying that under the zoning ordinance, it came into common ownership and therefore it no longer has the protection of a non-conforming lot. Not that it's no longer a lot of record. It can still be developed, it just needs variances.
That's not what the statute says. The statute says you can't do that.
Why don't you finish up and we'll discuss it about ourselves.
So, so in the first bullet point, argument against that they weren't administratively merged, which they were, there's no basis for the appeal. As the city has involuntarily merged lots while under common ownership, the lots are deemed to be separate lots and have not been merged. Very difficult to follow, as demonstrated by the fact that Lot Nine was recently sold. Yes, where our argument is that they're separate lots of record and that they have grandfathered status as separate lots of record. The second, RSA six forty, six seventy-four thirty-nine A only prohibits the municipality from merging pre-existing subdivided lots without the consent of the owner. I would agree with that. Even if the lots had been involuntarily merged, which they were, she says they were not, RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine eight A provides that the restoration of lots to their pre-merge status shall not be deemed secure. shall not be deemed to cure any nonconformity with the existing local land use ordinance. Under the statute, the lots were never merged, therefore they, we're not asking for them to be restored. The restoration section of the statute deals with lots that were merged years ago. Lot lines were erased off the tax map, and the lots were gone. This was never the case in the situation. These lots were always separate lots of record until September 27th, when it was denied a building permit. So, and this decision was written. So we're not asking you to restore the lots, we're asking you to vacate the decision that they're not lots of record and that they are grandfathered like any other lot of record in the city. The New Hampshire statutes do not, the third bullet point, the New Hampshire statutes do not invalidate ordinances prevented, preventing the development of contiguous lots that were once on a common. The city is allowed to apply its definition, conditions, and because the lot does not meet the requirements of the development of a one-family detached dwelling unit, it must obtain a variance. The New Hampshire statute absolutely does. The municipal association has said that the ordinance that consolidated these lots is invalid. And we provided that information, it's a legal opinion from a municipal attorney that works for municipality. So the statute most definitely does say that you can't have a zoning ordinance that does this. It's illegal. And then the fourth and final bullet point is the applicant relies on the article written by the New Hampshire Municipal Association, but this article does not address the applicant's arguments. The New Hampshire practice series recognizes the restoration of lots to their pre-merger status does not cure any nonconformity. Again, we're talking about restoring, we don't want the lot restored. This was a lot of record that was, that had grandfathered status and could be built on. It is short, it is a 75 feet of frontage, I believe it's 80 feet is required, and it's short, so it's two nonconformities that we need reinstated are frontage and lot size. It can be built on and meet all the other zoning requirements in that district, but as a lot of record, created in 1906, it was a valid lot of record. It was a valid lot of record up until September 27th, 2022, when this decision was made. So, you know, we're just asking you to reinstate, reinstate it as a lot with its grandfathered status so that it can be sold and built on and restore its value. Because essentially, the value of the property has been stolen from it, despite the fact that it's assessed at $119,900, and the previous have been paying that amount of money in taxes for decades. So, that's pretty much it, I hope I was brief enough and quickly enough, there's a lot of information. It's a very complex issue, a lot of history.
Questions from the board?
Before getting to the, just procedurally, I just want to get a better understanding about, it's a dense set of facts, and there's probably opinions on either side. We seem to be asking to interpret something that just seems out of the norm that would be before the zoning board. I'm not unsympathetic, I certainly get it, I'm just saying, we're getting presented a pretty dense set of issues before us tonight.
And we could, it is within our purview to overturn or not overturn?
Or continue and ask Jim Kennedy.
Right, so we could ask for help, which is, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
We might want to do it, okay. Other questions?
I didn't do anything, just, I don't want to do, I think you preserved your, by being here, you probably preserved the 30-day clock, I don't want to do anything, interfere with that. I didn't even know if that's the case, but.
Three days went fast.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions?
I have a question. According to your position, and are you saying that the involuntary merger occurred in September of this year with this decision?
There was no notice to the All Anonims prior to that. They had no reason to believe the lots were merged for zoning purposes.
So, but, so, because you're saying there was an involuntary merger, you're saying it just occurred based on this decision?
That's the first, anybody that is associated with this lot was aware that there was an issue with it not being a lot.
So up until then, your position is it was never merged, they've always been separate lots?
Always got separate tax bills.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In fact, in 2014, which is after the statute was done, the law was surveyed. This plan is recorded, it was surveyed as a separate lot of record. Copy of this plan was given to the city, this is in 2014, and nobody said anything about, well, wait a minute, it's not a lot, and, so. No reason to believe that it was a lot.
Other questions?
Ted, any questions?
Andrew, any more questions?
No.
Laura, would you like to ask another question?
No question, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
I would ask that additional testimony has been presented, if we could have an opportunity to rebut it. Appreciate that.
Yeah, if you keep it very brief.
I'll do my absolute best. Thank you.
I think, given the nature of this particular request, we should go right over to Code enforcement and ask Ms. Hutton to fill us in on anything she thinks we ought to hear.
Yep, just to clarify my background, I've been in municipal planning for over 20 years. It's actually Dr. Hutton, and I have a degree in law and policy. So as Tim stated, he got his information from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and I don't argue the information that he had, but it does go on to say that restoration of lots does not cure the nonconformity. So if they had been merged, which they have not, they could not have been sold separately, which they were. So in order to sell a lot that's been merged, you need permission from the city council, which they did not need because they were not merged.
So you're saying you can sell a nonconforming lot?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Right.
Additionally, I know that Mr. Bernier is of the opinion that the city can't apply its definitions that are in the zoning ordinance to lots if they're grandfathered nonconforming lots of record, and that isn't entirely accurate. So if the city has definitions or standards for a lot, they can still apply those regardless of what other things are existing around them. So all we're saying is that, yes, this is a separate lot, but yes, it needs a variance to meet the standards of current ordinance.
Because of whatever that number was, 2883?
Correct. Correct, because that section of the ordinance is clear, that it is not, it does not exist, exempt from the ordinance essentially, if they were held in common ownership.
Cure it, so to speak, of its deficiency?
Correct.
Okay. Questions?
So your position is not that there was a voluntary merger, your position is there's never been a merger?
Correct.
But that it does not retain, that other lot does not retain its, quote, grandfather, grandparent rights?
As Mr. Bernier is applying that term, yes.
Because nonconforming lots have no inherent right under the law to be developed at all without a variance. Only when the zoning ordinance gives it permission for nonconforming lots to be developed absent meeting all of the conditions can they be developed. So the city is absolutely within its power to say, some nonconforming lots can be developed this way, and other nonconforming lots, if they are brought into common ownership, cannot be. It has nothing to do with the statute and nothing to do with the merger.
Is that your view?
It is.
But do we, so, but according to that code, it has to do with whether it was under common ownership at the effective date of this ordinance, which was 2000, this ordinance is 2004?
In previous versions, this, these lots, as Mr. Bernier stated, have been in common ownership since the 40s.
So because they came into common ownership, they lost their nonconforming status, but not their status as a lot of record?
Other questions?
So if we upheld the Code enforcement decision, then the property owner could come back for variance?
Correct.
Yeah, for a specific proposal.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this subject? Mr. Bernier, is there anything else that you can add that's new?
Just to address comments that were made, the first thing, there was a comment that I had said that the definitions in the ordinance couldn't be utilized, that's not what I said. It's not what the municipal association said either. What the municipal association said, and what I said was that, if you have a zoning ordinance, it's adopted in 2004, and then the state legislature passes a law in 2010 that makes something in that ordinance illegal, something that a municipality can't do anymore, that section can no longer be enforced in the ordinance. It makes it, I forget the exact words the attorney used, but it just, it makes it go away. You can't apply it.
Void. Preemptive.
Would you say that it's a fair statement to say that you disagree with the Code enforcement officer about the definition of an involuntary merger?
I don't think that, I think that I, just reading the statute, it has a definition, I read it, I think it's pretty clear. I'm not, I don't really think that, the definition that Code is using, I don't really know, involuntary merger can mean a lot of different things. It doesn't mean just one thing, and I think that's the problem. I think Code is saying that involuntary merger means one thing, and only one thing, and the statute does not require that. The statute says that it can be an involuntary merger for zoning, for assessing, or, and it uses the term "or," taxation, so they're exclusive. You can, and in this particular case, the involuntary merger is strictly a zoning.
So it's your contention, and I think you did say this before, that you do not need to change the lot lines for it to be merged? Under the?
Right, correct, it could be just a zoning merger, which is typically how the City of Concord has done this for the last few years, which is, and the problem with doing it that way is there's absolutely no notice. When you erase it off the tax map, you used to get two tax bills, and then all of a sudden you get one. So you're kind of put on notice, and hey, something's changed. When they do it this way, and only steal the zoning aspect of your grandfather's status, then you get no notice at all. You have no idea that the value of your property is gone.
Doesn't seem really what you're saying is that the, quote, involuntary, what you say is involuntary merger really occurred when they made the zoning ordinance in 2004? Because it's the zoning ordinance that says that if they're under common ownership, that they don't retain their grandfather rights?
You could interpret it that way, however, that's not how it's been implied in the city. The city, some lots are merged, some lots aren't, there's absolutely no reason why some are and some aren't. It's always been that way, but you have no reason to know that that's not a separate lot until somebody tells you it's not a separate lot.
Well, I suppose the zoning ordinance itself gets public notice, so someone could look at it.
You could interpret it that way, but, yeah.
We did have cases coming in prior to when the 2010 law was passed, where people's, the city essentially said, because of the way the ordinance is written, you effectively have one lot here, not two, even though there's a line down the middle of it, and that's, that could happen for a number of reasons. You can't treat it as two lots, you have to treat it as one lot, period. And that's what was made illegal, as I understand it.
The provisions would say something like, when two nonconforming lots come into common ownership, they shall be deemed one lot, and be made, and that's not what those provisions say.
So there's a little institutional knowledge.
Yeah. And then finally, this comment about nonconforming lots can't be developed. A grand, there's a grandfather provision in our state law, that if a lot gets created, just because you, just because you changed the zoning ordinance, doesn't mean that, so, if somebody, if you approved a subdivision, the planning board approved a subdivision on Tuesday, and the zoning ordinance got changed on Wednesday, doesn't vacate all those lots. Those lots still exist, and they can still be developed, and if they're no longer in compliance with things like frontage and lot size, doesn't mean that they can't be developed. They can still be built on, as long as they meet the other criteria, like the building setbacks and those kinds of things. They don't need a variance to be built on for frontage because they were a grandfathered pre-existing nonconforming lot. They existed, they were conforming at the time they were created, as the lots were.
I don't think there's an argument about that, though.
Yeah, it was just a statement that one of the board members made, that nonconforming lots could not be developed without a variance.
No, what I said was, nonconforming lots can be developed in accordance with the ordinance, and the ordinance may allow them to be developed without a variance.
And this lot could be developed without a variance?
If it were still grandfathered.
If it was still grandfathered, if the frontage and the lot size was.
I think we're all in agreement about that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Hugh. That would declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. And I'm not going to recite a summary of it, because you all heard it. I think everybody's familiar with what God said. Let's address a question that Jim raised to begin with. And let me pull the board without necessarily saying what I think. Do you, would you want to get further legal advice on this subject before you made a decision?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think it's, it's three yeses and two noes, which, because I'm, I think I know how I come down on this. But out of respect for the other members who would like more information, we have it at our fingertips, we owe it to the appellant to do that, if we can, and we can. I believe the proper procedure then would be for us to table the case and pending consultation with the city attorney, and then take it off the table once we'd had a discussion with the city attorney, and had the benefit of their view on it.
My question, it's been a while since we've done that, do we have to then allow further testimony, or can we just deliberate at that point?
We can deliberate.
Because at this point, it doesn't seem like really the facts are in much dispute, and we wouldn't be hearing any more testimony, so I don't think, do we have to have everyone come back? They can come back, but.
I, I guess that's something to ask the attorney. In other situations, the conversations we've had have been considered privileged. In other words, we're not obliged to, well, you know your lawyer. I only know stuff about, like, T-squares and things like that. He might say, in this case, or she, depending on who we're talking to, now, in this case, you gotta make public whatever I tell you.
Okay.
In which case, that's what we'll do.
Or the Borrmite cheese to do that.
Yeah, yeah. So, since I'm hearing a three-to-two majority, would somebody care to make a motion to table the case pending consultation with the city?
A move that we table the case pending consultation with the city attorney?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I vote aye to, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. We're gonna ask for help, let's do it. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we?
Take a break. You gonna take a break?
Oh, no, I said aye.
Oh, you did?
I did, yeah, no, you guys want, I completely support that. We're taking a five-minute break?
We certainly can, it looks like we are, because the room is clearing out. I'm all by myself up here. Five-minute break, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Next case is, we're gonna, there are two cases here that are closely related. In fact, they are next door to each other, and involve the same questions. So, I'm gonna ask the appellant for both cases to come up at once. This will be case 007-2022 and 008-2022. Eleven Perkins Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District, Nancy E. Mallett, or Mallett, owner, wishes to execute a lot line adjustment with 1315 Perkins Street, and request variances to Article 284-1B minimum lot size to allow resulting lot of 5,775 square feet, where 10,000 square feet is required, and Article 284-1C minimum lot frontage to allow 72.3 feet of frontage, where 80 feet is required. And then the second case is 1315 Perkins Street, Neighborhood Residential District, Sandra Longfeller and April Woodbury owners, and they are making a request, a similar request for allowing 5,296 square foot lot, where 10,000 is required, allowing 64.47 frontage, where 80 is required, and also allowing forgiveness for the minimum side yard requirements to allow two and a half feet to the Westley property line, where 10 feet is required. But that's not on the first one, only on the second. That's right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I know you will. Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Good evening, my name's Mark Sargent, and I am with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates, and I am here tonight representing both applicants. And I don't know, Tracy, we got a plan?
Sorry. My fault.
So, I'll wait for the plan to come up, so it'll be a little self-explanatory.
I couldn't remember my password. You want the plan from your application?
Please.
One plan, two stars, two cases. That's efficiency.
That's it, yeah.
You want a pointer?
Sideways, but that's...
Now, we can, do what I do best, turn the lights off.
How's that?
It's upside down. Getting there. Perfect. All right. So, the properties are located at 11 and 13 through 15 Perkins Street. 11 is owned by Ms. Mallett, and 11, or 13 through 15 is owned by Sandra Longfeller and April Woodbury. What the two applicants like to do is a lot line adjustment between the two properties. The 11 is on the right-hand side, 13 through 15 is on the left-hand side. 11, right now, has an area of .14 acres with 65 feet of frontage, just over 65 feet of frontage. 13 through 15 has .12 acres with 71 feet of frontage. So, what they're proposing to do, you can see that funky lot line between the two properties, it kind of goes off at an angle, and at the closest point there to 13 through 15 in the back corner, the property line is actually 1.2 feet from the corner of the house. So, what they'd like to do is kind of just straighten that line out, and make it perpendicular to Perkins Street. And what that does is causes a net loss of area for 11 of 111 square feet, and a net gain of 6.53 feet of frontage. And then on 13 through 15, it's a net gain, obviously, of the 111 square feet, and the loss of the 6.53 reduces the frontage from the 71 to 64.47. And, but it allows, it gives a little bit more breathing room for the lot line along the house, and so now it's 2.5 feet versus 1.2 feet. It's parallel with the house, and it just kind of makes, just cleaner, cleaner lots out there. So, that was the intent between the both. So, we need variances on 11 to 284-1B, which is the minimum lot size. We don't meet it as it exists today, and, you know, we're reducing it by 111 square feet. The same with the frontage. We don't meet it as today. We are adding 6.53 feet of frontage, but we still won't meet the minimum requirement. And on 11, or, excuse me, 13 through 15, we need a variance, again, for the lot size. It doesn't meet it, but it is going to be increased by 111 square feet. The frontage will be decreased, but be, you know, somewhat in compliance, or somewhat the same amount of frontage as on the other lots in the neighborhood. And in this particular case, there's a required 10-foot setback. Neither one of the lots, you know, meet that setback as it exists today by relocating this lot line. 11 will meet the required side yard setback, but obviously, 13 through 15 won't. As I mentioned before, right now, the back corner is 1.2 feet, and the, by moving this, we'll have two and a half feet. The front corner, I'll add, currently is about six feet. So, I did provide, as part of our application justification for the variances, I can read those, reiterate them if you'd like, but they're in your package.
We read them.
Okay. So, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from the board?
What's motivating them to do it by changing lot lines? Do they have more flexibility to use the property differently?
Yeah, that gives Nancy, we did the survey for Nancy back, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, and they didn't realize that that lot line was such a sharp angle, so Nancy had a driveway, actually, on that side at one point in time. And this just kind of, the property on the 13 through 15, I believe, is being sold, so this was just presented the perfect opportunity to kind of straighten that lot line out, and make it, you know, a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, I guess, I don't know, but just so it, it, it's more what, when you look at it, it's how it's being used.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Sargent.
You're very welcome.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
You've seen these before, when they do a boundary line adjustment, they have to seek variances for whatever is gonna be non-conforming in the afterlife, so it's pretty self-explanatory.
The afterlife? I had no idea. I had no idea we had such influence. Goodness. I should have a miter or something if I'm gonna sit up here. Mr. Evans.
St. Peter.
Yeah, yeah. The key, the whole nine yards. Mr. Evans.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'm satisfied.
I have no problems.
Agreed.
The designer in me is desperate to straighten that line. Would anyone care to make a motion?
You should take them separately.
Yeah, I suppose we should, actually, you're right, we should. We got two cases here, I was thinking two variances, but you're right.
Okay, in case 007, oh, 007?
Yep.
11 Perkins Street, I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Anyone care to make a motion on 8?
I'll move on 008-22-1315 Perkins Street, that we approve the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous. Straighten that line.
Thank you, good luck.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, next case is SE001-WY-WY-WY. Don't ask me, because I don't know. 15 Shawmett Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District, CUSD and Eastman School co-owners. The owners wish to provide a part-day Head Start and childcare programs, and seek a special exception from Article 2824J principle of, or Table of Principal Uses. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but...
I do.
I do as well.
Well, I would think, I think, expect nothing less. Please identify yourself as you testify, and fill us in on what you think we ought to know.
Sure. Thank you very much. I'm Michael Tabery. I am the Chief Operating Officer with Community Action Program for Belknap and Merrimack Counties. You might be familiar with us for Fuel Assistance, WIC, the Concord Area Transit System, and we also provide Head Start and early Head Start services, as well as a total of close to 70 programs and services throughout the two counties. This is Heather Patton. She's our Child Development Director at the program. This particular case, I'll give you a summary, and you can tell me if, from there, you want me to go through each of the criteria. So, recently, due really to need, we've chosen to set up a new Head Start, early Head Start center. This Eastman School location currently houses Boys and Girls Club, and we'd be taking over a portion of the space that they'd been utilizing and no longer use, to provide early Head Start and Head Start programming for as many as 16 children. The timeframe is between 8:30 and 12:30. We believe it had very minimal impact on the local community, as far as anything detrimental. It's, you know, a residential area around it. It's, you know, this could be light additional traffic, they'll be dropping off children, they'll be picking up children, and there'd probably be three to maximum, but probably four staff employed in that location. If you'd like, I can go through the rest of the criteria.
What does the board say? Do you, we have read the application. Do you want to hear the criteria?
No.
No, we read it. I think we, unless there's something that's not in your app that you think we ought to know?
I don't believe so.
So, this was, Boys and Girls Club uses this on a temporary basis, where they were doing construction, and they actually came here several years ago, didn't they? Or perhaps you don't recall. So, most of what, the neighborhood is used to what's going on.
I'm sorry?
The neighborhood is very used to what's taking place on the property.
Okay. Boys and Girls Club will still be there. They're, we're just taking up a portion of the space that they have not been utilizing.
I'm wondering why they, if the Boys and Girls Club is there, do they, why do they even need another special exception? Because isn't it already being used for this?
So, the Boys and Girls Club was granted a temporary.
Oh.
And this is more childcare than what the Boys and Girls Club does, and childcare is defined as a special exception in this district. While the school use is permitted, this is literally childcare is a special exception in this district. So, because they're adding that
I see.
...aspect to it, it does require the permit.
Okay.
I think childcare is a special exception in all districts, isn't it? In Concord?
I'd have to look.
It, in further support of this, one could argue that Head Start and early Head Start is educational, even more so than childcare. But not having seen that use, and there is a, I don't know if childcare, we tend to blend them, you know? Head Start, early Head Start, and childcare blended in our programming.
What's the ages?
So, the classroom that we're going to have at Eastman is only preschool age, and it is a school year classroom, versus childcare is typically a full-day type of program, which is what the Boys and Girls Club currently have, but we're only looking for part-day.
And so, ages is six weeks to five years old?
Head Start, so it's preschool.
Okay, so...
Three and four.
So, three to kindergarten.
Sounds like a rowdy crowd.
Is it new program?
You're not volunteering.
So, it was, this particular classroom, or I should say, these funded spots were originally in Warner, but based upon the community assess needs that Community Action Program did last year, the, it warrants that the greater need for our community is in Concord, so rather than where we were in Warner.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal?
You did get a letter in favor.
Oh, I did?
It was the one on, at your table. It was, it was very brief. It was from Suzanne Smith Meyer at 14 Shawmett Street, who is in full support of granting the special exception, because it's a great match in the use of the building, much like the school was, and an asset to the neighborhood.
And she hopes to meet you in person.
She's still on this voting board?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Thank you. Well, that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and I will invite Mr. Winters to dive into this tough one.
Well, you know, on this, the special exception criteria go, and we did look at it, but it really goes to the burden on town resources, and this is, this building's historically been used in a very similar function for, you know, for a long, long time, so it doesn't seem to really change the impact in any way, so I, you know, would be inclined to approve.
I agree with Andrew.
Same.
Likewise.
I feel the same, think the same, too. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the special exception.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The vote is unanimous. The special exception is granted. That brings us to case 009-2022. 58 Pleasant Street, CBP Civic Performance District, known as Parking Realty LLC owner. The owner wishes to convert a professional office building to a two-family dwelling, and request variances to Article 2857A to allow residential conversion on a lot comprised of 3,223 square feet, where a lot size of 7,500 square feet with 5,000 square feet buildable area is required, and Article 2872C off-street parking requirements to allow for a reduction in the required parking from four to one. Mr. Hastings, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but...
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Philip Hastings. I'm an attorney with Cleveland Morris in Bass. I represent, known as Parking Realty LLC, the owner of this property.
What would you like us to know?
We submitted an application to you for a couple of variances, although I'm not sure a variance is really required for the parking. This is a unusual situation. The property is located at 58 Pleasant Street, which is at the corner of Federal and Pleasant Street. It was formerly used as a law office. I suspect it was used at one time as a residence, given the design and history of the building itself. I don't know that for sure.
Is that Paul Maggiato's old office?
Yes, correct. Correct. It's across from the federal courthouse. It's in a mixed-use district. There's other office buildings there. It's next to restaurant property. to, uh, restaurant property, residential property. Uh, it's located in the CVP district, which permits a variety of uses. Um, my client, uh, uh, is not interested in continuing the office use of the property. Uh, he would like to, uh, convert the building to a two-family dwelling. Uh, it's, uh, physically situated very well for a two-family, uh, dwelling. Unfortunately, uh, oh, and in the CVP district, two-family dwellings are permitted as a right. Uh, so we don't need a, uh, use variance here. Uh, through, um, what I would consider a quirk of the zoning ordinance, uh, this is treated as a conversion of a, uh, office use to a residential use, and in the CVP district, even though there's no, uh, specific lot-size requirement for properties, uh, in the CVP district, conversions to residential use do require lot sizes of 700, uh, 7,500 square feet. The lot size here is just over 3,000 square feet. Um, so on that basis, the change of use is really what's rendering, uh, this property non-conforming. Um, the salient facts, um, justifying a variance is that the property is in a mixed-use district. Uh, it's an existing property and we're not creating a new lot. Uh, the use is reasonable, given the unique condition of the property and its location. Uh, the size of the lot is reasonable for its use. Many other properties in this district of similar uses have similar lot sizes. Uh, it will not alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood. Uh, it will benefit the public by, uh, albeit in a small way, by converting a res, uh, an office use to a residential use, so adding, uh, two new units to the housing stock in Concord. Um, and without the variance, uh, my client would have to continue a use that's, uh, he doesn't consider viable for the property. Housing in this area is, uh, the most viable and highest and best use. Um, so substantial justice would be done, and it would be in the, uh, public interest, uh, to grant the variance, uh, for the, uh, reduced lot size. The, uh, parking, uh, variance, uh, request, um, is related to the fact, again, that we're converting from a residential, uh, office use to a residential use. Um, under, uh, an office use, uh, this property would require nine parking spaces, off-street parking spaces. Um, that's based on one, uh, one space for, for 300 square feet of use. There's a little bit over, uh, 2,700 square feet of office use according to the tax records. But in fact, there's only one space, um, onsite here. Um, so it's, uh, already a non-conforming use in terms of the parking requirements. Uh, the residential use requires two spaces per unit, um, so we're reducing the non-conformity, uh, uh, from, uh, where one is, nine is required, uh, one is provided to now a situation where four is required and one is provided. My client's working on, uh, trying to see if he can relocate. There's a, uh, utility pole right next to the spot, uh, on Federal Street, the existing off-street parking spot. If he can, uh, get the utility company to relocate the pole, he might be able to get two spaces, um, onsite, which would be ideal for, for two, uh, dwelling units. Uh, it would be ideal to have two spaces. Um, but right now, we're just dealing with what we, what we have. Um, the change in use, uh, uh, will, uh, make the property less non-conforming. Uh, and in this area that I think as, uh, Dr. Hutton noted in her memo, uh, there is predominantly, uh, on-street parking in that entire, uh, area of the city. So it would not be out of character, uh, to require on, uh, on-street parking instead of off-street parking spaces. It's all happened.
Questions for Mr. Hastings? Any questions? Jim?
What is the parking easement that's shown on the plan?
The parking easement shown on the plan, uh, right now, the current conditions, um, the property line, uh, the parking from the adjoining property, uh, which is known as.
On the south.
Restaurant and Spring Court condominium, that parking encroaches over the property line.
Okay.
Um, so, the, to straighten out that issue, uh, we would probably, uh, do some sort of parking easement. So that's why it's shown on the plan. It's really not relevant to the two variances requested.
Well, I'm wondering if it might be relevant, because if, when, I assume when the restaurants closed, those parking spaces would be open for the residents to use?
Um, it, it's possible. Uh, this condominium has the five, uh, five condominiums.
Yep.
Um, on, uh, North Spring Street.
Yep.
They use that parking area. There's dedicated parking, uh, in the carport. Um, so we don't want to necessarily impinge on any of their parking rates in terms of access, although that might be a solution, uh, to get a second, at least a second parking spot.
The, the, the only difference I see in the, in the, it's a similar amount of spots required for residential versus the office workers, but, you know, office workers, you know, they can rent off, off-site parking and walk, kind of like the, the workers at the Federal Court. That's probably what the law office was doing before. They must have had some arrangement, because they wouldn't have all been able to park on the street there. In fact, I'm not even, I don't even, the parking.
It's only on one side?
Uh, yeah, there's bear, there's, that's, I don't know, there might be two-hour or one-hour parking on Pleasant Street there. It's very limited parking on the Pleasant Street. So like, where's, where's he thinking, uh, these residents are really going to park overnight?
The, the standard has been one parking spot per unit. Um, that's what's, uh, provided at the Spring Corner site, for example. There's only one spot per, per dwelling unit. Um, so folks who reside in one of the dwelling units, if we're not able to provide a second spot, would have to find alternative parking elsewhere on the street. It's, it's not an ideal s- situation, but it's no worse than the existing office use.
Other questions?
Is that needed parking? Is it metered parking?
On the street? I, I don't know. Uh, I believe on Pleasant Street, it is metered parking. I'm not sure what it is on Federal Street or what parking exists on Federal Street.
I believe on Pleasant Street there, it's, I mean, it made, it's, it's metered maybe an hour or two hours, because it's right across from the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Or in opposition to it? Comments from code enforcement?
Yeah, the only additional comment I wanted to make about the parking is that, um, I talked to General Services. This is in the winter maintenance parking day and area, so where, um, generally people in offices don't park overnight. These residents would obviously want to park overnight, and that presents a problem with that winter parking maintenance area. That was my only.
Are the garages open during the winter parking maintenance?
I don't know about the garages. I do know that the streets are completely off-limits.
But the garages are.
Yeah.
I think it's typically recommended that they, you park in the garage.
Yeah.
I think downtown residents, they kind of.
It does pres, present a further strain. And the, oh, the other comment I wanted to make is if they do seek an alternative parking arrangement, that is a conditional use.
Oh, you mean with a related entity?
Yeah.
But that doesn't, that's not our worry.
It is not. I did, that's what I wanted to say, is that.
Yeah, all right.
They would need an additional approval from a different board if that was what they were seeking.
One of those other boards. Care about them. All right, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. I invite conversation on the subject of this request, starting over with Mr. Monahan. Nope.
Yeah, no, I think there's no question. You want to go first? I, I agree with Ted.
And Ted just sighed.
Uh, there's no question. This building was very, it was, it was designed as a residential building. Um, it's gone back and forth, given the need for additional housing. I think it's a productive use of it. Um, it, I think it's up to the business, the, the, um, property owner to figure out the parking piece. I think at least they want to move a utility pole, so good luck, but you're at least making effort. And it's really up to them to find renters that are willing to, to rent without the parking provided.
Like relocating a volcano. Laura?
Uh, I would have no problem with either variance. I think that neither of them would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because I agree with Jim. It was obviously built as a house. Um, I think that, and the parking problem exists. I think it will not diminish surrounding property values, uh, and substantial justice would be done despite the fact that it's a reduced lot size, and I think the property is unique, given the existing structure and the existing parking. So I would have no problem granting either variance.
Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do have a concern about the parking, be, but I think I can get over it. Um, it's, it, you know, it's not like a situation where you're adding parking in an area that's going to be overflowing above and in the neighbors, because the, the parking's terrible for everyone here anyway, and this adding four more units is pretty, pretty minimal compared to the total situation.
Two units.
Or two units, I'm sorry.
Theoretically, four cars.
Theoretically, four cars. It's, it's not good, but it's min, I mean, the parking's bad no matter what in this area. I'm surprised he doesn't tear it down and build a parking garage.
Very good. I agree with my colleagues. Uh, it seems to me that any permitted use here is going to require some forgiveness. This is just swapping one for another. In some ways, it's less of an impact. Anyone care to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve both requested variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variances are granted, and that brings us, I believe. You're welcome. Uh, that brings us to our last case on the agenda this evening, 0010, 2022, 388 Loudon Road, Gateway Performance District. Jeremy Martenson wishes to relocate his transmission shop and seeks a variance to Article 2824J, Table of Principal Uses, to allow use J4, 4J, J4, automotive repair, service and towing, excluding bodywork, at this location. You both swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
I do.
Please identify yourselves for the record as you testify.
Uh, my name's Allison McGregor. I'm an attorney with Orrin Reno. Um, we're here to represent Jeremy Martenson.
And I'm Jeremy Martenson, owner, operator of AMCO.
So we're here to request the variance for, permit, uh, change in use, um, to be able to permit his auto repair facility, his AMCO transmission business, to move from 234 Loudon Road up to 388 Loudon Road. So it's currently located in the Gateway Performance District. Um, just moving, as you can see, up Loudon Road there. So I'm going to let, um, Jeremy kind of give a little bit of background really quickly on his business and just kind of what AMCO is like.
Yeah, basically, I've been in the business since I graduated college, uh, about 15 years. I was hired by AMCO at that location. Um, started as a manager in training, became a manager, became a general manager, now I'm the owner, operator. Take a lot of pride in what I do. Um, we're the number one AMCO in the Northeast. Um, uh, the biggest issue that I face right now as an owner, operator in Concord is the, is the parking, the flow of the parking. Um, we share the parking lot with Valvoline, um, so Valvoline's made it clear that they would rather not have, uh, another repair facility next to them. They would rather just operate independently without us there. I've been actively searching for another location for the business for several years. Um, there is no current listings on property available on Manchester Street or Loudon Road, other than the Red Apple Buffet on the corner. Uh, so I've really been, um, you know, researching and investing and time into, to try and define a property where the, the traffic is, is more feasible for the business that we have. Um, as a member of the community and a member of, you know, my business, I strive to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Um, you know, I participate in, you know, uh, sponsoring sports programs and, uh, we work with churches and stuff like that. But more or less, we're here, uh, to, to essentially move the business not far just down the street and hopefully, um, you know, just, just relocate.
What's on the property now?
Uh, currently, the property that we're looking to relocate is, there was a, like, a rundown biker bar there. Um, so it doesn't look like much was reinvested in that property in a long time. Um, so currently, it's just, it was a restaurant that, like I said, I mean, there was some complaints I've gathered from, from, uh, local residents and neighbors, um, that it wasn't ideal for, you know, uh, the area. So I, I have approached the, the two neighbors, Chapel Tractor, and there's a law firm next door, and they both have given me their approval that they'd really like to see it repurposed, a new state-of-the-art, you know, repair facility, obviously, versus what it is now and what it's been, which is this, you know, this biker bar that, you know, it's just kind of this, uh, eyesore, so to speak.
Yeah, so if I can just kind of orient you, there's 393 is just north of there, so that's all the interchange is trying to get on to 393 there. Um, Chapel Tractor is the one directly across from the lot, um, across Loudon Road, and then obviously you have about a quarter mile of like minimally developed land before you hit kind of the core of the Gateway Performance District. So, as you mentioned, the site's currently, the building's vacant. Um, it was previously a restaurant there. Um, kind of jumping around in our discussion here a little bit, but that kind of goes right to our hardship argument is that there is, you know, and we're looking at types of businesses that can survive and thrive in this area, um, being located right across from Chapel Tractor, which is a current non-conforming use in this area as well, um, being located so close to 393, we find that those restaurants just didn't survive there. Um, we'd see probably similar problems with a small retail business, just because they don't receive the same amount of traffic that, you know, those businesses kind of rely on. Those are being done more in the core part of the Gateway Performance District. Um, but it's also only a two-acre lot, so you're not going to see, you know, one of those big box stores or your big grocery stores come in and take over this lot, and that's why we're seeing it sit kind of unused right now. So when we're looking at kind of, you know, the spirit of the ordinance and what's there, we want to see it be, you know, attractive gateway to our community. Um, we want to see it be functional, um, and that's not currently what it is doing there. Um, the other thing that's important is that he is currently in the Gateway Performance District, looking to just move to this is probably the furthest, I don't know if you can show like the overlays, but it's the northernmost point of the Gateway Performance District here. Um, so when we're talking about the gateway to the downtown area, he's actually taking an auto repair facility and moving it further up and further north, um, in the area. So I can jump through the criterias if you would like me to. I think those were honestly some of our main points, um, right there. I know we're looking at kind of a late hour here, and you guys have been hearing a lot of cases. Um, one thing I do want to talk about, because he spoke about parking, but just kind of traffic congestion in general on Loudon Road is obviously an issue. Um, when we look to kind of the public health, public safety, the welfare of the community, um, where he's at right now, there's really no traffic slowing measures when people come in and out of the Valvoline, the AMCO facility that's there. So, you know, you're trying to make a left turn across Loudon Road, you're accelerating into these places, you're accelerating across the sidewalks. When you come to this spot here, you're seeing a lot more of just kind of like natural traffic slowing conditions. There's concrete medians that don't allow direct left-hand turns in and out of or across Loudon. Um, so you're actually seeing an increase in public safety by having the, you know, a car-centered business be moved outside of that core area. So that's kind of character locality, like we said. It's the Chapel Tractor across the street. We're not going to see it dra- drastically change. Um, substantial justice, uh, his business is doing very well. He needs a new place to be able to grow and expand, um, as well as just kind of be able to be accessed by customers more easily. Um, this site allows for that, while not preventing any, you know, public harm. So I think substantial justice is done. The value of the property surrounding properties has not diminished. Um, once again, Chapel Tractor is a existing non-conforming use that's there. Um, they've expressed that they are in support of this. The law office that's directly, um, north of the facility has also written a letter, and we've submitted it to you guys. I think you had it in your seats this mo, or when you arrived. Felt like this morning, but, no.
We do have the letter.
Yes, so the letter is here. Yes, so the letter is here, um, showing that support. So, um, the surrounding property values, we just don't think would be diminished, especially considering the prior businesses that were there experienced probably louder noise complaints, more traffic at later hours, things like that, but. At that point, I guess Mr. Martenson has proven to be a really successful business owner, um, even with competitors located quite close. Moving this existing business from the core of the Gateway Performance District to a northern boundary site would be beneficial not only to him, but to the district as a whole. You pair it with an existing non-conforming use, where we're developing an underutilized property, um, freeing space in the core of the district, reducing congestion, increasing driver and pedestrian safety, and positively contributing to the goal of maintaining, maintaining an attractive gateway to our city. So we're asking that you grant the variance for Section twenty-eight two four J, allowing an auto repair facility at three eighty-eight Loudon Road.
Questions?
Is the other property behind it there, like that third piece of property, is that just vacant?
I believe that might be, uh, let me circle the planet, do you know what that was?
The big chunk?
Yeah, the big chunk in the back.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's vacant.
I think they've been trying to sell, sell that for some time, but that is vacant.
There's no structure on that?
I don't believe so.
There's no structure on it.
Other questions?
What kind of volume do you do, like relative to, say like Jiffy Lube or something like that?
So our car count's about, uh, thirty to forty cars a week. So it's not tons and tons, uh, bigger repairs, transmissions, engines, stuff like that.
Okay, so you're not doing like that many oil changes, inspections?
We, we honestly don't do state inspections and we don't do oil changes.
So you mainly do.
Ours is, you know, it's the transmission's the most complex, you know, item on the car. We're, that's, that's what we want to do. Drive train, you know, the big jobs essentially, but, you know, the high-volume oil changes and all that stuff, it's not really our, our, uh, our business model.
So you're keeping cars for, for a few days at a time?
Yeah, exactly. Yep. And that's where the, the parking is an important aspect. And I always tell people that, you know, unlike a Jiffy Lube or a brake and muffler shop where they're in and out the same day, we're taking a transmission out. Essentially, the transmission has to come apart, has to be rebuilt. We have that car for three to five days. So obviously, there's other, you know, limitations and challenges with parts and stuff like that since COVID, but, um, that's where, you know, granting this would be, would be great just because of, you know, the, the, the constraints we have with the, with the flow of the traffic and the parking now.
Is the current location non-conforming or was there a variance? The current, the current location was, I would have to look, to be honest. I'm not sure what the history of that facility is. It would be non-conforming as a, I don't know if it was grandfathered in, it's a.
Other questions from the board? Is where the old Speedway gas station was, or is this?
No, that's Jimmy's Seafood Restaurant or Pitt Road Lounge, as it was known.
Oh, Speedway was not on that property.
Where's the, where's the Valvoline place that you mentioned in relation?
Right next door to, to us, uh, so just down the street, two thirty-four Loudon Road. So if you go down Loudon Road, like you're going back to the city, probably half a mile, a mile?
It's one mile.
Yeah.
So to the left, you can see Valvoline, so you can see, I mean, it's less than an acre. We're both about a four thousand square foot building each. They're, they're doing a lot more traffic than we are. I mean, the, the oil changes, the, the quick tickets in and out, so the.
So we're going from, just to give the board an idea, we're going from here up to here.
Is the entire length of Loudon Road there all the Gateway Performance?
Other questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone like to be heard in favor or in opposition to this appeal? Comments from code enforcement?
No, I gave the surrounding uses on your memo just so you had a sense of what was on there, and again, this was going to require further planning board review, so.
Very good. And that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. I'll invite, uh, discussion. This time, we'll start with Mr. Evans.
I think it meets all the criteria and I'm willing to approve.
I agree with Ted again.
All right.
I'm struggling with the hardship. I don't see how it's different from any other property in the Gateway Performance District. Just because it's better than what's there doesn't make it unique.
Andrew.
I'm surprised that this isn't allowed in the Gateway Performance, just because there are, like they said, at least three other auto body shop, uh, repair shops, plus there's like granite glass, there's, it seems like a few other related type of activity down there, and it seems pretty characteristic with, with the neighborhood, so I'd be inclined to approve.
I, I also be inclined to approve, I think you can make an argument, uh, that the location of the property creates problems for some of the permitted uses, but not for this particular use, uh, with the traffic and its proximity to the highway, and we heard testimony of that sort. So I think based on that, I'd be willing to support a motion to grant the, uh, to grant the variances. Is it two or one?
One.
One, grant the variance. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move it to approve, um, the variance to Article twenty-eight two four J, Table of Principal Uses, to allow the use of the automotive repair.
Second. Anyone care a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
The vote is four to one. Laura is in the minority on this one. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from last, last month?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I, I second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four votes and an abstention, I think we got it. Anything else that we need to talk about tonight? Dr. Hutton?
No.
All right, in that case.
I like this starting at six thing. David thought you might.